Whoa, what was that?
Sorry.
That's scary. Go ahead.
Continue, I have to start all over again.
Please do, Arthur. Please.
All right, variances for side yard and total side setback required for Article 13 Use Regulations, Section 210-133, Chapter 210, Attachment 5, Table 2 of the R40 Book Table of the Village of Airmont zoning code. The lot is designated as Section 55.16 Block 2, Lot 53 on the town of Ramapo tax map. The property is located on the airport, approximately 400 feet north of Dawn Lane. The property is located in the R40 zoning district and is comprised of .6 acres. The street address is 6 Air Court, Airmont, New York, 10901. All right, is there anyone here from the applicant to speak?
Mr. Harpas is on the homeowner. I'm just going to unmute him. Mr. Harpas, would you like to speak? Mr. Harpas? I can't hear you. Mr. Harpas, can you call in if you can't?
You guys hear me?
Yeah.
No. Yes.
Yes.
Can you identify yourself so we know who we're talking to?
Hi, Mr. Harpas. You have to, you have to go to the bottom left where it says stop video and click on it to get yourself off, to get your picture showing. And I have your, maybe to have your recording on, your recorder, I mean, your microphone.
Let's see, everything is done? Can you see me?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And here you are.
Can you me? Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I cannot see anybody, but I'm Daniel Harpas. And my wife and I have living in this bill, in this house for 37 years and hope to stay for many more years. We are now mid 70s and as we age, we need an ability to go up the steps. Our knees are not functioning as they did and therefore we asking to build an elevator between the first and second floor. We put an application and the inspector had to reject it because of non-compliance with the side yard on our left of the house or the south side as well as the total side setback. The house was built exactly 51 years ago, so I don't know what the requirements were there. But what we asking you is for the board to give us a variance so we can build this shaft, which is about five by five foot. And we will decrease the total site setback from 50, current 52 to about 48.6 feet. The construction is a wooden frame, which will be covered with vinyl siding, the same as the house. And the only place that we can do it is on that side because on that side of the house, the only house where the first floor and upper floor are lining up. The design of the house is that our bedrooms are overhanging by about two feet over the first floor, so they're not lining up and we cannot simply. Okay, so any question that I can answer?
Yes, Mr. Harpas, I have a question. Can this, when you build this elevator, will it be visible from the front of the house?
Front of?
Your house, can you see this elevator?
Yes, if you stand in front of my house, you will see, you'll see it will look like a chimney of a fireplace. It's on the side. Okay, it's a side of the house, on the right side of the house. So if you're standing on the road, okay, in front of my house, it will stick out to the right by five feet. But it will be finished the same way as the rest of the house with vinyl siding.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Marty has a question here. May I?
Yes, certainly, please do.
Okay. Sir, Marty Cavell here. So, so what you're saying is there is, this is the most reasonable place on your home to, excuse me, to place this elevator housing construction as opposed to around the back of the house? Is it because it would not properly or effectively line up with what is on the upper floor? And, and, and first floor? Can you sort of explain where the elevator will wind up in the second floor of your house and the first floor?
Right now, we couldn't, on the north side, which is the, the two sides, I must, gentlemen, if, and ladies, if you have A2, the blueprint.
I do.
You can, okay, so if you look on the top, existing right side elevation, you can see that this, the two floors here line up. If you now look to the right over there, you can see the second floor is sticking out, okay, or can deliver.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's about two feet difference. Now, it is possible. However, it is much more complicated because first of all, we need to create now a tunnel on the first floor, which is our dining room. And that well has all the buildings and it will aesthetically look awful because you have a two-foot tunnel to walk in towards the elevator. Now, in the upper bedroom, yes, I can go through a window there. Each window that we now replacing on the north side will become a door. Nobody will know that we have, you won't see from inside the elevator. However, if I go to the back, I have to have a tunnel, I cannot put an elevator, doors, I'm sorry. Because the door to the elevator is about three feet and the tunnel is two feet. So I cannot put another door over there.
Okay, sure.
The construction will be more complicated because now you need, instead of a five by five footing, now you have to go five by seven and and it will not look as nice as on the side because if you look at the bottom of A2, new right side elevation, the architect designed a beautiful roof finishes to line up with the existing roof.
Right.
Okay, so this will be the simplest. And no, there is no other place. Okay, I don't have any other place to do that because the opposite side on the left of my house, the garage is sticking out. And, okay, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harpas. Is there anyone else on the board that has any questions?
I'm good.
It's Suzanne. I just wanted to say no GML was required for this property. And the only letter, agency letter I received is from the Rockland County SOAR that I received today, which I sent to everyone. I have to get the phone.
Okay. Do we have a motion to open this up to the public?
I make a motion to the public.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, is there anyone in the public who wishes to have a comment here?
Can I just comment? I see some of them out here. I recognize some of my neighbors. They all sent you a letter. My whole cul-de-sac sent a letter in favor of us doing it, so.
I'm a neighbor right, I'm a neighbor right across the street from Oberlander on 5 Air Court and we're right across. And we would see the elevator and we don't oppose and we would like our neighbors to have their elevator.
Okay, thank you. You really have to be sworn in before you testify, but do you affirm that what you just said was the truth?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We'll accept that. Is there anyone else in the public who wish to be identified? Okay, I don't hear anybody, so we have.
I tried, Mr. Chairman. As per my last meetings that I've watched on this board, we used to say to raise the hand, so I've tried raising my hand.
Which I did as well.
Okay, what is your name?
My name is Jacob Reichberg and I live at 8 Air Court, which is right next door to your applicant.
Okay, do you affirm that the testimony you have to give will be truthful to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it will.
Okay, please, please go ahead.
So as Mr. Harpas stated before, we did go around with all the neighbors and I actually dropped it off to Suzanne, the letter, that everybody is okay with it. And according to your previous question, if you look at the house, if you're coming down the street, you're not going to see it, only if you're like focusing on it because the other house, number three? Number three, no? Yeah, what number? You're four? Four is.
Number four.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to see it if you're driving down the street. And if you do, it's like a regular chimney type of view. And they've tried every way of getting away with this, you know, doing it more simpler way. And he tried every aspect that he could, but that's his most convenient and easiest way to get it done.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be identified?
Zalman Rubin.
Okay, can you give us your name, give us the address and you give, where do you live?
Zalma Rubin, 20 Algonquin Circle, Airmont.
Okay, and you affirm that the information you're about to give will be truthful to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I honestly don't see the issue. I think we're all going to be at a certain age. Well, hopefully we won't need it, but we'll probably will. And, you know, of course, I would want it to be nice, but I don't see any reason in the world anybody should have an issue, to be honest. I don't see why it would require a public hearing. And I don't think there's any decent human being that will be opposed to this.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
There's Jack.
I think Jack spoke already.
Yeah, I can speak.
All right.
I live one house next to him and I don't have an issue that he's making an effort. I live on Fort Air Court and I believe he is. Don't have service, one second.
He don't want to hold up the whole meeting. He basically said that he signed the letter and he's right next.
Sorry, I was trying to get Mr. Berger on. There is a letter that was, was brought here. Dated June 2nd, received June 4th. Dear Board Members, we, the undersigners, asking the Board Members to approve the zoning variance that will permit our neighbors, Mr. and Mr. Harpas, to construct an elevator shaft on the north side of their houses per their application. The Harp houses have resided in the house for over 35 years and they wish to stay there for many more years. However, senior citizens, it is getting more difficult for them to climb steps. They are beloved by all neighbors and we wish for them to be able to modify their homes so that they can remain our neighbors for years. And it's respectfully signed by two Air Court, Friedman, three Air Court Pollock, four Air Court Sherrillowitz, five Air Court Oberlander, seven Air Court Runwald, eight Air Court Reichberg, nine Air Court Weisberger, and 10 Dawn Lane Walner.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rubin was speaking. Have you completed what you have to say?
Yes, yes, I did. And I think, seeing the letter from the neighbors, nobody disagrees.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Was there a Mr. Jack who wanted to speak or?
No, I spoke already. I don't know why it's still up.
Oh, okay. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to be identified? No, okay. Do we have a motion to close?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second, Marty.
Okay, what's the vote on that?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that's unanimous. All right. Does someone want to make a motion here concerning this application?
Well, do we need a motion under the state Environmental and Quality Review Act? I believe we do, so I'd like to make a motion and this should be listed as unclassified under the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
You don't think type two would be more appropriate?
I meant type, I'm sorry. Is it type two? I was mistaken then, yes.
So you're saying type two, okay. Should we vote on that? One second, someone has to second your motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion has had some property seconded, so let's vote on that. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Anyone opposed?
No.
So that's unanimous. Okay, now, having done that, who wants to make a motion concerning the application?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I'll make a motion to approve the application, but I'm going to need a little math here with the, with the numbers because I'm a little unclear. We're approving variances for the side yard and the side setback, correct?
Yes.
All right, so because, you know, the language that I have here, I'm reading, you know, north side and south side, so I'm not certain, you know, how to phrase this.
Can I help, please? This is.
Wait, hold it, hold it, hold it. It's up to you. Do you want to let the applicant interject here on this?
Why don't you just read what it says on the on this, on the meeting?
Well, it says, all right, I make a motion to approve variances for side yard and total side setback from Article 13 Use Regulations, Section 210-133 and Chapter 210, Attachment 5, Table 2 of the R40 Book Table of the Village of Airmont zoning code. The lot is designated as Section 55.16 Block 2 and Lot 53 on the town of Ramapo tax map. The street address is 6 Air Court, Airmont, New York, 10901. But I think in the motion.
Yes, sir.
Marty, it's Suzanne. It's required 70 feet, provided 48.6.
All right, so we're, we're granting, we're granting a 22, no.
Twenty, what?
21.4.
21.4.
A variance of 21 points, 21 point, 21.4 feet. Well, that's it, that's the motion.
For total side setback and side yard.
For total side setback and side yard to this property.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been seconded. Call the roll.
Wait, any discussion, Mr. Chairman? There might not be, but I think it's appropriate you ask.
All right, is there any?
Super play.
No.
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 Okay.
But I had to say that, Arthur, I'm sorry.
No, you're right. Okay, so now we call the roll.
Hold on, before, before we do that, I think it's important to point out that this will not have a deleterious impact on the neighborhood. In fact, to our knowledge or belief, every neighbor of the applicant was in support of this application that it will not cause any undue burden on health, safety, and welfare within the neighborhood. That the size and scope of the variance is not dramatic, that other methods of pursuing this may be available but would cause more of a problem both from a practical standpoint and an aesthetic standpoint. And that as a result, the board grants the variances. And if anyone wants to add anything to that.
Does anyone want to add? Nobody, okay. Now, we'll take that as part of the motion. It'll be incorporated into the motion. Okay, now we're ready for the, calling the roll.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Sheldon Mayor, Meyer, sorry.
I'm in favor.
Okay, Mr. Cavell?
Well, I just want to say, you know, with respect to what our attorney said, all of that, plus it would be in my mind in the interest of justice that we grant this request for this variance.
Okay. Um, Mr. Meyer?
I approve.
Okay, um, Robin Lukens?
Yes, I heartily approve.
Okay. And Chair, Chairman Katz?
I vote yes, also for the reasons stated, and this seems to be a good idea for the applicant and for the neighborhood. That makes it unanimous?
Yes, motion carries five to zero.
Okay.
Unanimously.
Can I interject? This is Daniel Harpas. I just want to thank all the Board Members and all my neighbors. Thank you much, very much for your support. Thank you.
More than welcome.
You're in many years in good health.
I hope so.
Move on to the next topic. Continuation of public hearing. Mr. Harpas, you're finished. Okay, continue public hearing on the application of 24 South Airmont Road for the construction of a new single-family residence requiring variance, lot width 160 feet required and 125 feet provided. Street frontage 100 feet required and 25.07 feet provided. Developmental coverage 20% coverage and 50% provided. 20% required and 50% provided. Those are minimums. And maximum lot area 40,000 square feet required and 29,539 provided. From Article 4 Use Regulations, Section 210-15 of the Village of Airmont zoning code. The lot is designated as Section 55, 11 Block 3, Lot 23.2 on the town of Ramapo tax map. The property is located in the R40 zoning district and is comprised of 1.06 acres. The street address is 24 South Airmont Road, Airmont, New York, 10901. Okay, is there anyone here from the applicant who wishes to speak?
I.
Yes, Kevin Conway, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Mr. Ex-Chairman and Board Members for the applicant. He's present tonight as well as Mr. Spraco. I'll be brief, but I did want to just give a brief recap to the Board Members that were not here or present for the previous presentment for this application. The applicant, Dembitzer, who's going to speak tonight in a moment, he wanted to have an opportunity to explain to the board why it is that he wishes to make the application and his reasoning behind it. The, he does wish to construct, as we just heard, a single-family home for him and his immediate family. The, by way of historical record for this application, back in 2005, the Village Zoning Board created by subdivision Lot A and Lot 3B, this is Lot 3B, which was granted subdivision, and lot width was also granted because the lot width is 125 square feet, where 160 feet are required, as well as street frontage was granted back in 2005 because the street frontage here is 25 square feet, or 100 square feet are required. So those two variances were already granted and run with the land and run with the application. The previously issued building permit had expired on the former owner and now the applicant is the current owner, seeks to construct a single-family home, but needs additional variances for lot areas mentioned a few moments ago. That's 40,000 square feet are required. The lot has 29,000 square feet approximately. However, for the Board Members that were not here previously, the Board did indicate it would take into account, and needs to take into account that in order to this application, it's a flag lot. The jug of the flag lot, under the old 2005 code portion, was included. So the entire flag lot would be included in square footage and the actual square footage for the site is 45,957 square feet. Under the old 2005 code, we wouldn't need the additional requirement or variance for either lot area or development coverage because the actual square footage is 45,957 square feet. But by the current definition interpretation of Mr. Zumo, the current building inspector, the jug of the flag lot comes out, which reduces the number by 16,000 square feet, giving a revised lot area of, instead of 45,000, down to 29,589, requiring the additional variance from the lot area. Additionally, development coverage is required. Under the old 2005 scheme and the zone, the lot, the full flag lot would be included where the development coverage was in, actually 52, it was 32%. Once you take out against the jug of the flag, of the flag lot, it is increased to 52%, requiring the additional variance. And we asked the Board to take this into account as a practical matter because the actual lot would otherwise comply but for that interpretation. The driveway is 467 square feet in length from the road and plus 100 feet to where the buildable area will be. This is a lot, it, it has elevation. There's another existing home on the lot next to it. The neighbors were in favor and spoke in favor of the application. The, and we asked the Board to take that to account because of the way the elevation of the lot, two lots sit up above the immediate neighborhood. Those are the two lots that are immediately adjacent to one another. The size of the home is large. It's a two-story home with a garage. The first floor is approximately 2,800 square feet. The second floor was approximately 2,800 square feet and the basement area was 2,300 square feet and 700 and square, 705 square feet for the garage totaling 8,200. So with that, I wanted to have Mr. Dembitzer speak just briefly to the Board. It's his application and he wanted the opportunity to address the Board.
Before you do that, do you know what size of the square footage of the previously approved house was back in 2005? What, or 2006?
I don't have that available tonight, but I can look into the historical record to see. I don't know if there were, what the plans were. I don't believe we have a copy of the plans for that home back in 2005, but that's something we can look into. back in two thousand and, uh, five, but that's something we can look at.
Okay.
Mr. Dembitzer, if you, is he on, Suzanne?
Uh, yeah, I'm looking for him. Uh, where is he?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, hi, Mr. Dembitzer. How are you?
I'm good. Um, yeah, so I would like to start, you know, from the beginning, we could. So when we first looked at this property back in February of two thousand and nineteen, you know, we right away fell in love with it. Obviously, we loved the, you know, the privacy that it was all, you know, underwater area. And we decided this is a perfect lot, you know, to build our dream house for our family. So at that time, we were told that the property was actually, they sold it to us, it proved ready to build up to ten thousand square feet. And we verified that, we tried to verify, we got the, the original site plan. And it shows, you know, that it's approved for, you know, up to ten thousand. We were building eighty-two hundred, I think. But ten thousand was approved and that's what they told us, so we went further, you know, to go purchase. Obviously, they said it's approved to build. We didn't know there's going to be any problems at all. And you know, we, we didn't want to change anything. We didn't even want to go back to the zoning board because we had different options, maybe make the house, because we made the house on this angle that it's right now because of the way the lot is. And we didn't want to go take any setbacks, new setbacks, so we stayed in the original box. When we went to apply for the permit, obviously COVID came around, so that was delayed for a few months. But then, you know, the building inspector rejected it because of this new law about the flag lot. So that was the issue basically. So we're not trying to build anything larger than this lot would allow. And basically, the only issue really is because of this new law of the flag lot. And how they interpreted, basically, we can't use the lot development. But we, we can't use the FAR from the pole, but we have to use the lot development from the pole, but not counting it in. It, it doesn't even, I don't know, it doesn't make sense. But whatever it is, you know, we tried to build a regular, you know, I'm not going to say a regular sized house, but a nice sized house. And it's, it's a one-family house. It's just, I, I, I don't see it as, you know, again, it's in, it's a big house. Any new house that you look now, I think, in Armont, is going to be the same size house, between eight and ten thousand square feet. You know, it's not, you know, most houses that people look at, they don't count the basement usually. So if you look at most houses, they're around five, six thousand square feet. That's without a basement. So the basement is usually another twenty-five hundred square feet, three thousand. So that's the same size. It's around the same size. So I would love for the board to approve my original plan so we can actually build our home that we're trying to do for the past two years. It's been two years now, maybe more actually. Thank you.
Just to be clear, Mr. Dembitzer, you're talking about the plan that's currently in front of the board? Some plan that you originally had agreements about, that right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're only looking at the plans that are now currently before the board.
Well, the, yes, but the plan didn't, you know, change much, you know.
Well, whatever it is, uh, whatever you had in your mind at one point is not what we're looking at. We're looking at whatever has been submitted. Okay.
For the record. But it has been submitted in the past, so the board hasn't.
For the record, Suzanne, can you say who the engineer was and what the last date uh, of, uh, any changes that might have been made to it?
This is their third time in front of the zoning board. And, um, because we didn't, we ran out of time last month. And from the packet previously, their plans from Sprocco engineering flat plan dated April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, revised per comments for twenty-one, twenty-one. There are architecturals, um, from William Bateman Architects. Uh, let's see. Dated one with changes for one twenty-seven, twenty-one. And the narrative, which I think we need to read, dated four twenty-two, twenty twenty-one from Fast Book. Essentially, um, mentions, uh, the, the additional request with this application is to have the driveway as shown on the plan included in the far calculation as the configuration of the lot is flag-shaped, requiring the same. The architect plan was revised on one twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. The previous plan had a three-car garage while the current plan has a two-car garage as requested by the board. The FAR was further reduced by cutting down the basement and making it non-inhabitable. The site plan was also revised to make the driveway a bit smaller and trees were added on the south side of the property as requested by the board. And then it just lists the lot width, street frontage, what's required and provided. Do you want me to read all of those?
Is the, yeah, I guess we should, so we know what we're talking about.
So the lot width required one hundred and sixty feet, provided one hundred and twenty-five feet. Street frontage required one hundred feet, provided twenty-five point oh seven feet. Floor area ratio required point two oh, provided point two oh. Maximum development coverage required twenty percent, provided fifty percent. Maximum lot area required three thousand, provided twenty-nine thousand five thirty-one.
Thank you. Mr. Zumo, are you, you're with us, right? Do you agree with all these numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
And Chairman Katz, if I could just interject for a moment. Um, Dan had asked a few moments ago the size of the original home from the original permit. And I just wanted to, uh, because I believe the client answered that question, question, then, then he had purchased the property and had looked at the prior approved site plan and permit and plans that the plans from two thousand and five. And I just want to make it clear and have that in the record that the plans were for a size of a single-family home of roughly ten thousand square feet.
That's not true. I have the plans.
Okay, well, that's what the client, just one of the client, that's what the client indicated.
Any idea what you were, Lou? I don't know if you have them with you?
Between thirty-five and thirty-eight. They're not with me at my house. They're in the office.
Okay.
So, between thirty-five hundred and thirty-eight hundred square feet.
That's what I suppose. And this is eighty?
Eighty-two.
At my notes, eighty?
Eighty-two hundred. With the basement, of course. Uh, what I'm saying is, you know, they told me right away, actually I have a message from the realtor that it's actually approved for bigger. I think the original house was like six thousand, sixty-five hundred with the basement. And they told me it's approved for bigger than that. It's approved for up to ten thousand square feet. The original plan wasn't maybe eighty-two hundred, but it was approved at that time. They sold me this lot. It proved the bill up to ten thousand square feet.
All right, Mr. Dembitzer, that'll be something between you and the realtor who
Obviously.
That have been accurate, but that's not our concern here. We're not focusing on what the realtor.
Well, we should go back. This lot should be considered grandfather. That's what I think, since it was.
Based on what? Based on what was, should be grandfathered?
Based on that the lot should not be called a flag lot right now because this is a new law just, just came into effect after the lot was subdivided.
Is that?
Lou, is that correct?
No. No. No, the law, the law was older than that. Obviously, it wasn't because how did they approve this, uh, to be ten thousand square feet? It was a forty-five thousand. It was never approved to be ten thousand square feet. That is, that is a line that your realtor sold you based on the approximate size of the acreage. I can share my, the bulk table from back then from the site plan. It has minimum lot provided is forty thousand, provided forty-five nine five seven. Development coverage was twenty-two percent at that time and it required was forty percent. Okay, so you're doing the math and, and coming up with ten thousand sweet, square feet based on a bogus bulk, bulk table? No, but based on the forty-five thousand square feet. I, I didn't come up with it. The engineer, the architect, they all, you know, this is what I was told all along with everyone. They verified.
How was this verified?
By the code, I guess.
Code? Code wouldn't verify anything. Code is not a person. Okay, uh, well, for the record, we could have got what our building inspector tells us, uh, and, um, and we'll leave it at that.
Okay, so I just want to add one thing. The building inspector rejected this, so he said that you cannot, I, I want to ask a question here because for me it was very, like, it didn't make sense and for anyone else I spoke to, it didn't make sense to say. Basically, that we cannot use the FAR from the pole, okay? No problem. So now we have thirty thousand. We minus the fifteen thousand already. Now for lot development, you're telling me, oh, we're going to use the pole, but not even in the forty-five thousand. We're only going to use it in the thirty. So you're minusing the fifteen from the thirty. I don't think that makes at all sense. Either you let me use it or you don't let me use it. But tell me I can't use the FAR, but I have to use it for the lot development and you have to take that fifteen and take it out of the thirty, not even letting me use it from the forty-five. I don't think that makes sense. You know, you guys can tell me what you think.
Uh, well, I think the building inspector has answered that question.
Hasn't. It's just his own, it's not a code, you know, I don't think it makes sense.
We, we go by the building inspector. Uh, okay, um, Mr. Conway, you want to continue?
Yes, I was just going to have Mr. Sprocco, uh, just go through the site plan briefly. But I did want the board to hear how, you know, it evolved to the point, uh, for the client as well, because it's important. It, it's part of the historical record as well as the, uh, prior code um, and how it was interpreted. So I would ask the board to take that into account because clearly that's what the client to believe and he can plans that, uh, that he has presented, that it was, um, you know, there, there's an explanation and an understanding as to why that, why that occurred and how it happened. So, Mr. Sprocco, do you have, um, anything you want to add?
Um, Suzanne, can I share the screen?
Yep, let me just go down. I also wanted to say for the record, Chairman, um, Katz, that Richard Berger is on the meeting.
Okay.
I just.
Are we taking both?
Back on.
He's here. Is Mr. Berger, uh, able to vote now? I mean?
Yes, no. No.
No, because you already appointed, um, Miss, Miss Lukens.
Okay. All right, but will he be able, available for the next case?
I thought you appointed Mrs. Lukens for the evening, correct, Dan? Or is it by application? That's a legal question. I'm not answering that.
Let's finish this case.
I think you could do it by application.
Okay, thank you.
All right, but meanwhile, this, uh, Robert Lukens is the, um, is on the board for this case. Okay.
I'm fine after this case to, you know, to defer to him.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mrs. Sprocco, you wanted to speak or we're speaking?
Sure. Uh, so everybody can see every, uh, the, the shared screen now?
Yes.
Okay, good. So the architect had given us new plans, uh, showing the two-car garage. Uh, it was also, uh, further from the property line and the front, it was fifty-seven. Now, it used to be fifty-four, so, and in the back it was seventy, it's now seventy-four, it was seventy-one. So the applicant reduced the size of the building as far as its configuration. We worked the numbers with the architect. And, um, we added a, a, a full row of, uh, planting, uh, Norway spruce along the, uh, the southerly border there. I think that's the southern end. Um, anyway, the lower, along the mound formerly Turner, uh, to shield their property. We've also made all the engineering, uh, accommodations that the town, the village engineer wanted us to perform, so that it's all ready to go. We do show in the book table, uh, in our book table, we comply with, um, FAR. We're at, um, fifty-eight, fifty-three, but that's not including a, uh, basement that the applicant was referring to. Um, so we have a seller currently, so that's why our plan complies with the FAR. It's why it's point two. What I think the applicant was trying to get at with the, the whole, uh, zoning, uh, and taking credit, um, for the development coverage is the applicant only gets to use the area that's indicated in the, um, the flag of top here. And he doesn't get to use the area for the entire flag pole all the way up to the lot.
Who owns that pole?
The pole is owned by the applicant, but it's also shared with the, uh, the driveway is shared with, um, uh, known, you know, the, the other, uh, neighbors along the southerly end there.
Is there a road maintenance agreement?
There is an ease for ingress, egress in utilities over lot three A, uh, for lot three A over lot three B and for lot three B over lot three A. So it's a shared easement.
Well, I know it's a shared easement, but is there anything in place, uh, where they have an agreement as to who plows, who pays, who pays, um, repairs?
Uh, uh, maybe Kevin does, or maybe, uh, Mr. Dembitzer would know that, uh, detailed information.
And do you know whether or not, uh, the two eighty A variance was ever granted?
I would defer to, uh,
Since it's a private road, it's a private road, uh, that accesses, uh, a public street.
Yes. Um, that would defer to Kevin on that one because it's, um, a, a previous CBA application uh, knowledge and I, I don't recall because I wasn't around then. So I'll let Kevin address that and then I'll get back to finishing off the presentation here.
Yep, sorry for interrupting.
No problem. Kevin, can you answer those two questions about the agreement?
Yeah, the agreement, the, the clients had preliminary discussions with the neighbor to, uh, because the client had already installed additional trees and complied with what the neighbor, the adjacent neighbors request were. So I advised the client that, um, the board may require attention, the, to have a, um, road maintenance. Yeah, because that's, that's normal standard procedure, so we have no issue with that. And as far as the two eighty A, I believe that was previously granted when the board previously granted the, um, the lot width and the street frontage at the time, because it was back in two thousand and five. Uh, if you need a copy of a two eighty A, not a two eighty A, uh, a road maintenance agreement, I'd be happy to provide you one. Appreciate that. I have the ones I use typically use that, uh, from Clarkstown, because this is where it's normally for my applications there. All right, well, since I wrote that one, uh, it should be good enough. There you go.
So anyway, moving on with, uh, what I was trying to bring out the point, I think what the applicant has concerns with, with the development coverage is that the, um, the building inspector has, uh, committed determination that the development area within the flag pole, which he's not entitled to use toward his calculations. This area here, all this impervious area cannot be used, or is included, is included in the development cal, uh, coverage calculations, though you can't use the area. So you're getting, you're having to take credit for something that you have no area to get, cover it, you know? That's what I think the frustration is, but I understand why because that's the law now. It maybe wasn't in two thousand and five. But if you had taken the entire property, if you took the entire property and you had fourteen thousand five hundred eighty-four square feet of development coverage and divided it by the gross area of forty-five nine fifty-seven, you'd only have thirty-two percent development coverage uh, in lieu of the twenty percent that's required. So it wouldn't be as harsh a, um, a development coverage. And I wanted the board to understand that because of not having, being able to take the credit of the pole and also getting, having to take the credit of the impervious area but not be able to use the area it's covering toward your calculation is kind of a double hit. So that's what the applicant meant by, uh, being unfair. And, uh, we would hope that the board can take some consideration in this matter uh, because it's an existing, uh, situation, so to speak, with the existing drive and he's limited to what he can do on the, the back flag area. And so, um, I think that's pretty much sums up everything I have. Now, I'll turn it back to Kevin.
Okay, so I wanted, I wanted to get the board's reaction as well as the members that perhaps didn't hear this previously.
I'm sorry, Mr. Conway, are you asking a question now?
Yeah, no, I, I was asking from the board. I wanted to gauge the, the. Yeah, no, I I was asking from the board, I wanted to gauge the the board's reaction to the plan with regard to the revisions made as well as the additional information that the board wasn't aware of, both the members that heard this before and the members that are just hearing it tonight for the first time.
Are you closing your presentation and asking us to vote on, uh, opens up to the public and vote on your application? Is that what you're asking?
I wanted to gauge the board's reaction first, just with regard to the revisions before we would, the client would make that decision.
You don't give advisory opinions here, you know, uh?
No, but I'm not asking for an advisory opinion, I'm just trying to gauge the board's reaction to the what we initially presented as opposed to what's presented now.
Well, it's pretty much the same size, correct? The only thing we did was take a two, a three-car garage, take the door is often, put two doors on it instead. That's the one change I see.
And we also, we also shrunk the basement. Why? By not including that as livable space, so that decreased numbers also and.
You oversize the 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 size of the house, it still has not changed. Now, now was the big discussion, how it doesn't fit in that neighborhood. Um, firstly, you know, you can knock it down because of the basement, but there's still going to be a basement there, um, just inhabitable at this time. If you were to come back and said, hey, we'll make the first floor two thousand square foot, second floor two thousand square feet, basement two thousand square foot. I might not be a big fan of it being six thousand square feet, but at least you reduce the overall size of the house, and I would be more leaning towards saying, this looks great, but this is the third time you're here, and pretty much, we're still looking at the same size house. No matter how you cut it, slice it, dice it, it's still oversized for that lot and for that area. That's my opinion.
Okay, I appreciate that, Ms. Mark, because I, this board is very engaging, so I want, you know, I want to get the reaction from the board.
We have, we've had numerous contractors come here with big plans and talk, and they reduced it and got approved. And uh, I just said, I just wish they would have made a more of an attempt to reduce the size of his house, and uh, nothing, nothing's changed other than you said, the basement is not going to be inhabitable, and the garage went from three car to two car, that, but the overall size of the house is still there.
Okay. And I would just ask if any other board members have any reactions on again.
Well, I, Marty Cabell here, I sort of uh, agree with Mr. Meyer for the most part. Um, you know, it's more about not so much uh, the surrounding area, I mean, drive through um, many areas in Rockland, in nearby Bergen County. There were more modest homes, and then uh, there are, you know, larger homes. You know, I'm not going to uh, you know, speculate as what I've seen over my time here as far as square footage, but I I have a pretty good idea, you know, what that size looks like. So it's more of the size of the lot that it's on, you know, but also uh, with what is surrounding it, but more on this, on the substandard size of the lot. You know, that's how I feel.
Okay.
If I may add one thing, please? Um, this house is not really, no one's going to see this house, this is, you can't really compare it to other houses because I chose this lot because it's a private lot, and no one uninvited will ever get to see this house, honestly, because you can't see it from the street, and it's all the way in the back, it's behind all the houses, so it's not really, we're not comparing with any houses. And the size of, you know, it fits into the lot, it's not like it's oversized. Obviously, and the previous, the the neighbor last meeting mentioned that his house was also a pretty large house. So it's not like it's the only large house. His house is also, I think, like five thousand square feet, that's without the basement, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there is, you know, I I I can't even estimate the size of this home. It happens to be on um, South Armont Road, towards uh, closer towards, um, it's between Campbell Avenue and Church Road. It's a ranch house, you know, uh, one story. And it's, I can't even estimate, it's a very large, uh, you know, home. I don't know the size of the property. I mean, they're all lo- larger homes around, you know, larger than the forty-two, forty-five, forty-eight, and you know, fifty square, uh, fifty-foot, you know, raised ranches, which is a predominant architecture in in the region. Yes, there are colonials, but uh, not nearly the size of, uh, you know, what's being requested. But there is this rather, rather very large ranch home right up the road, so I just throw that out there in the interest of fairness.
Okay.
Marty? Are you talking about the black one across the, from the cemetery?
Yes.
That house is forty-something, four thousand eight hundred square feet, it's got a courtyard behind in the middle of it, that's why it appears to be large, it's only three bedroom.
It's an atrium ranch.
Yep.
Okay, I was unaware of that because I was never up on the property, so I appreciate that information, and I appreciate you, Mr. Zumo, for uh, specifying the size there. Okay.
And uh, Chair, Mr. Chair, can I just have one moment just to speak with my client by phone? Just one brief moment.
Right, go ahead.
Can you call me, please?
A minute or two or something?
Yeah, just, just, just very brief.
Okay. Yeah, Suzanne, we're adjourning for uh, two minutes.
Okay. Mr. Zimo, can you, can you please explain what you mean by a courtyard in the middle? I didn't quite catch that.
I'm sorry?
The house is shaped like a U. If you go from one side of the house, is it, it's, you walk into a hallway, the kitchen's on the right and the garage, and then ahead is a office, bedroom, and the other two rooms bend around. In the middle, there's a big courtyard. There's no, the house isn't a huge house, there's a, the house is shaped like a U.
Hmm, okay. Okay. I would say then, then Marty's point is still somewhat relevant in terms of uh, you know, optics for the size of something compared to the, you know, if people see that and look at it as a large house, you know, what's in the middle of it, I, you know, maybe for developmental coverage and certain things is, you know, it's different, but
It's also a single floor.
It may have, I'm saying in terms of optics, I still think, you know, um, you know, Marty has got, got a point there.
Well, I, I um, I was just saying, you know, many of the homes, the predominant architecture are raised branches, and uh, you know, from fifteen hundred feet to, you know, thirty-five hundred feet if they're of the fifty-foot uh, length and uh, with any additions, you know, they exist, but this one, I I just wanted to throw it out on the same road, there's something larger than uh, a majority of homes, to be fair. That's all. I had no idea that it had a courtyard and didn't have another several thousand square feet of living space in there, that's all, and I appreciate.
I need you to call me on my cell phone, I need you to call me at eight four five seven two nine two zero nine six. Sorry, Mr. Mr. Cabell.
No, no problem.
I want, I would like to say something.
Yes, go ahead.
To put it, to put it in perspective, um, you know, I'm I'm a real estate agent, so I just did a quick search in the village of Armont for square footage, I forget what I put in, anyhow. So, just to give you an idea, sixteen Murray Drive is over seven thousand square feet, five Barrett Drive is almost seven thousand square feet. Six, um, one Seth Lorna is on, is fifty-five seventy-four, five, uh, we had five Barrett. Um, and, and, and eighty-three Campbell Avenue is five thousand five hundred forty-three square feet.
Can I clarify some of those?
What do you mean? I'm just giving you some large houses here, and most of those.
Is a house of worship.
What?
Sixteen Murray is the shul.
Okay, sorry, I'm just, I'm just pulling this up just, you know, off the top, but regardless.
Tony Malia's old house, which has a giant addition.
Yes, 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 but I'm just saying, most of them, most of them are not even huge properties, you know, okay, eighty-three Campbell is over four acres. Um, but the rest of them are there between point six, four, um, like, just under an acre, you know, and so on, one point eight six acres, so just to let you know what there is in the village that even comes close.
Tony, is this property that we're talking about here?
I I believe Mr. Conway at the, one of the second, first or second meeting, did try to do some comparatives. Um, but I don't know that all of you were on the board at that point.
Yes, and I can review that again. I did take my client, and my client does wish to have the board vote on this tonight. Um, let me just see if I have the comparable. He had presented uh, five Barrett Drive in Armont, an eleven-bed, nine-bath, single-family home. We provided photos, there was also uh, Dorchester Drive, Armont, a five-bed, five-bath, single-family home, we provided twelve photos, it was eight. Eight, eight South Post Lane, Armont, four-bedroom, four-bath, single home. We provided forty-four photos, Madison Hill Road, seven-bed, four-bath, single-family home. And, and this is not, um, as we talked about at the first meeting, for new homes, the trend is exactly what uh, what we're requesting here. Because whether it's an existing neighborhood, you'll notice, and it, it doesn't matter whether it's Orange Town, Clarkstown, Stony Point, or Armont, many times when it's going to, uh, the client will buy the existing site and knock down the split-level ranch or ranch or capes, because there isn't a market, you don't see, that's why when it, it doesn't matter where you go, you don't see new capes being constructed, uh, new uh, foot level or uh, or ranches being constructed, and so the trend is exactly what uh, what we're talking about here. Would increase the property values of the neighborhood, and because the site is situated with the elevation that it is situated with, and it is treed, uh, a lot of the trees will be taken down in connection with the construction, but notwithstanding, a lot of trees will remain. So we really do believe that it will not be a detriment to the immediate neighborhood. The um, and it's always difficult because when someone wants to build the dream house, you don't really want to have it where the board's dictating the size of the house that a person can build if it otherwise worked with the site. And the most immediate person that's adjacent to the site appeared before this board previously, I believe twice, and testified in favor of it. Um, so I do think that this would not, um, because of where the site is situated and where it sits on the site, and because it is a flag lot, that um, this would not um, otherwise open up Pandora's box for this board, where the board would have to be concerned with um, this creating a negative precedent. This is still a single-family house with a single family that's going to occupy the property. So based upon that, my client does wish, and you have to take into consideration, because as an attorney, we always look at, what's the historical record, what if there had to be litigation on a, on a, on a matter? Uh, this one would turn on whether or not the previous um, two thousand and five grants were given for the, for the two, for the subdivision as well as the two variances, can make the argument, and you could before a judge, that the two thousand and five flag lot uh, requirement would apply as well. That um, and and even if the board uh, took the position that the uh, building inspector's determination is correct, because we had discussions with Mr. Zumo, we always do, the um, the board needs to take into account, as Mr. Sprocco said, and showed the uh, the practical um, aspects of this, that the site really does comply when you take into account the total size uh, of the lot. So to pretend that doesn't exist, and to have the client um, penalized accordingly, we asked the board to take that into account. So um, based upon that, my client does wish to proceed.
All right, one second, Mr. Zuo, um, under the previous uh, code, would this have been okay? Or much smaller variances required in two thousand and five?
I I wouldn't know without analyzing it with, based on the two thousand and five codes, because the house that was originally approved on that size lot was much smaller. So I'd have to go back to to square one, look at the old code, and then calculate it with the new numbers in the larger house.
Uh, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Zimo, can I just ask you to clarify, was there a specific point in time where the law changed regarding the flat, um, the flag lot and when that was?
Again, I don't know when the code was changed, it was, wasn't in the, in the last five years that I've been there. So it's uh, it's probably prior to that, I don't know when the code, the date of the code change was.
Mr. Conway, would you happen to know?
Uh, we believe when we looked at it with Mr. Sprocco's office with Bill Johnson back in two thousand and five, it did not exist, and that the size of the lot here is actually forty-five nine fifty-seven. In our position, when we discussed it with Mr. Zumo before, was that if we're going to receive grandfather status for the subdivision, which we do, for the lot width and the street frontage, which we do, so we don't need this board to rerule on those uh, issues, that we also believe that with regards to the flag lot, because it was construction of a single-family home on a flag lot in two thousand and five, uh, so it was a similar application that we'd be entitled to that relief as well. So we are, even if the board were to say, okay, well technically, we're not, you know, we don't feel comfortable grandfathering in uh, the flag lot aspect of it, the board still should, in my opinion, give us the relief for, because otherwise you know, as a practical matter, that it's forty-five thousand nine fifty-seven square feet. And if you took that into account, we wouldn't need the request for the lot, minimum lot area. Beltman coverage would be uh, much less than what it is when you have to subtract out what the building inspector is requesting. So um, and the lot certainly at forty-five thousand nine fifty-seven square feet, it can accommodate an eight thousand square foot home, and perhaps that wouldn't be the size of home that uh, the rest of us might construct on this site, that large a parcel, you can do it, and it would not otherwise require, um, we already have the two variances and the subdivision, and it would only require a small variance for development coverage. So based upon that, I don't think the board, um, just because the size of the home should shock the board in today's environment, or should, that should be an issue for to reject it, because legally speaking, if the matter had to be reviewed by a Supreme Court judge, we'd have a very strong argument um, with regard to the grandfathered status, including with regard to the flag lot. And again, it's not the client's intention to have to go that route, but you know, in every case, there's always legal, sometimes there's no legal issues in a case, sometimes there's multiple. But this one is a uh, it's an interesting issue because the board don't need uh, subdivision, we don't need lot width, we don't need tree frontage. The um, they're allowed to build a house as a matter of right, and they previously, the historical record on this actual site gives the grant of variance and subdivision for those other two variances, so it's not a stretch to say we should also be entitled to the uh, flag lot interpretation had it existed in two thousand and five, which allowed the full calculation of all the square footage to be included, because then the only uh, variance we would need would be a very minor one for development cover.
So, let me ask you something. Yep, what, I I think you're missing something though, Kevin. Couldn't you reduce the size and scope of the variances by reducing the house? And isn't that one of the standards? Uh, in terms of weighing your entitlement to a variance?
The the size of the house doesn't become the, I mean, that's, the board's taking that position, but that's not legally speaking, it's not, you know, the size of the house dictates um, the lot, you have to take into account the size of the lot and the size of the house that could be built on.
Developmental coverage relates clearly to the size of the house.
Correct.
So if you have a smaller house, you need either no developmental coverage variance or a lesser developmental coverage variance, and one of the standards that you have to show in order to be entitled to uh, a variance.
Correct, but what we're requesting from the board is because of the actual size of the lot, that if you take into account the actual size, that the, that variance would be very minor. It's, it's not now because of the interpretation from the building inspector, otherwise it would be a minor variance, and it's the only variance that we'd be seeking.
And I wanted to add that most of the lot development is actually the driveway. That's what Kevin found my wrong, wrecked me, but the lot development right now is a driveway.
Right, and I just did a calculation real quick. If we, if we knocked the building down to four thousand square, uh, I'm sorry, two thousand square feet footprint that uh, Mr. Meyer had suggested, even if he did that, you'd still need a forty-seven percent variance in lieu of the fifty now. So the the reduction would be minimal uh, for reducing the size of the building when it already complies with FAR. It's, it's really the function of the, the long driveway. It's really driving this, and that having to count the, the flag pole area, when you cannot use the flag pole area in your, uh, calculation for the FA, um, for, for development coverage. It's kind of like you're taking area and you can't apply it to anything, you just gotta add it. And that's, that's what the frustration with, uh, our applicant is with this development coverage.
Okay. But these are the kinds of things that we're suppo, we're all supposed to deal with in terms of considering, uh, whether or not a zoning board should grant a variance. So, this was, uh, a helpful exercise.
I, I would agree.
Okay. Conway, have you, uh, finished your presentation?
Yes, I have, Mr. Cass. Thank you.
Does the board have anything to ask of Mr. Conway or the applicant?
Could he, I, I mean, for, uh, maybe more than just my benefit, go over, um, you know, why it's felt that the, uh, request, uh, for upgrading development coverage is not, you know, it's a mu, why it, it's stated as a minor scenario, you know, can he just illustrate that with the size of the lot? However, he wants to state that.
Well, perhaps I was gonna have to defer to Mr. Sprocco on that.
That would be good.
Yeah, because when you take out the, um, and I'm gonna have him go through the calculations. But when you take out, if you, if you did this pursuant to what we're requesting, the actual size of the lot, the, um, the percentage would be much less than otherwise, uh, because again, the driveway being calculated in drives that number up, um, beyond, because, and I believe he just provided the illustration, but even if we were to eliminate two thousand square feet from the building itself, it still would require a, um, based upon the interpretation with the flag lot, it still would require a variance. But, uh, Steve, if you just run the numbers?
Sure, um, the, the issue here is, uh, if you would just assume, let, let's imagine for now, for what, for just a little bit, we just imagine that the property fronted south down my road, we didn't have the flag pole, we didn't have to go down this long driveway down to the property. And we just, we had, hey, let's say it had the right, you know, the same area of, uh, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine, right, uh, that were, the zoning area we're applying now. If we took, let's say that's sixty-five hundred, roughly that's sixty-five hundred square feet of impervious, I don't have the exact number, I'm just throwing it as an example, uh, it's, it's around there. I don't have the exact numbers. The point, the point I'm making is, if we're only sixty-five hundred, if we're fronting a street without the flag pole, you know, sixty-five hundred divided by twenty-nine, five, three, nine, you'd have a twenty-two percent, you'd almost comply. You'd almost comply with, uh, your, uh, development coverage, because you have, I, I, I just threw a number out there, sixty-five hundred. And that's probably given a generous number. You, you'd almost comply, you'd have twenty-two percent. You see what, the, the applicant is dealing, dealing with this problem that he inherited now with the flag pole. The flag pole is causing all the issue. And that's why, uh, Mr. Conway is suggesting that it's really, if you look at it that way, it's a minimal variance. It, it would be small. If, if you applied sixty-five hundred to the, just the whole lot area, that you can use, what, the twenty-nine thousand, it would be only twenty-two percent. If you took the entire lot with the flag pole, as it stands today, you'd have a thirty-two percent uh, variance. If you're allowed to use the gross area of forty-nine thousand, forty-five thousand, nine fifty-seven. I think that's the point he's trying to make. All of the, the three of the variances are existing, not good for me, as far as I see it. Um, you know, it's a function of way back when, there's a lot, is the lot. So now we're looking at development coverage. Okay, what can this applicant do? Well, he's got no choice. He's gotta go down this driveway. This driveway is probably eight thousand square feet with all the impervious. He gets to the back, and now, what do we do now? So what do, whether he puts up a four thousand square foot building, or uh, you know, or, or I'm sorry to say, a two thousand square foot footprint, which is what you are the development coverage account, or, uh, twenty-eight, which is what he has right now, you're only, it's, it's, it's minimal. It's like within two percent, three percent of development coverage. So could he reduce it? Yes, but the point he's trying to make is, it's really, it's a, it's a, it's a function of, uh, it doesn't accomplish anything. Does that help, uh, explain the issue with the development coverage, sir?
It sure does.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I interject for a second? The development coverage is unfor, is unavoidable, because it's there. You have to count the developmental coverage, because the driveway is paved. It's not like you could just subtract it from the total and make believe it doesn't exist, and then when you put a house on the lot, that has to be added as well, and the huge driveway has to be added as well, and the parking area. And all that is actually existing. So making believe it doesn't exist and altering the numbers to make it work is not the answer.
Oh, we're, we're not asking that. We're, we're telling, we're asking the board to view it with that in mind. That's what we're asking the board. Because to, and the other way is not fair either. That's what the applicant's saying. Because he can't, even if you were to shrink the house, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Reduce, it would reduce the amount of variance. You can't eliminate it based on the length of the driveway and.
Correct, that's what we're saying. So we're asking the board to keep that in mind and take that into account. It's all right.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Vista Conway by the board or the applicant?
Uh, Arthur, in past meetings, I'm having a senior moment. Did we discuss anything about or have any illumination on the factors of, uh, drainage? Suzanne shaking her head, yes.
We did. There's a drainage report that was submitted. Um, there are two engineering reviews. I believe the second review.
Right, right.
Um, self-explanatory, if we didn't read that into the record. We do have to go over the Gmail, because they did recommend modifications. But it's also a continued public hearing for the public.
Yes. Arthur, thank you, Suzanne.
Yeah, but in the past, um, there was concerns from the public on the drainage. That was one of the biggest concerns, runoff.
And Mr., uh, Crivell, former chair, the, uh, the village engineer did, uh, did address those issues along with Mr. Sprocco.
Right.
Yes. They, they've approved our drainage report. They had a few minor considerations, like she, uh, uh, even Makuso believed that the, um, the, the, there was an infiltration system. It's not an infiltration system, it's a detention system. So the only comment that was relevant in her letter toward the drainage was that comment, and it's a non-issue, because it's not a infiltration system in this case.
Well, the reason why I brought it up is because I remember past meetings, a lot of my fellow Armonters, um, on Madison Hill Road had concern, you know, about drainage issues, and, uh, I think there were also certain screening issues, but that's another story. But they did have concern, so I just wanted to, you know, reiterate, uh, the scenario with, uh, with drainage. I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And the village engineer had no problem with the drainage last time. She said that everything is good. It's no more water damage, if something, less water, because we're putting in a drainage system. So the water was not an issue.
I just needed to, uh, you know.
I'm just saying what she said.
Bring it to the forefront, as this is, you know, another chapter in, you know, another, um, you know, uh, hearing. Or in it, you know, a continuation, and that we should have our memories refreshed, that's all, and the public, that's it.
For sure. It's, it's also a benefit for the new members, Marty, that, because we were not present at the old, uh, hearing, so.
Okay, great.
Suzanne, did you say the public hearing is still open?
Yes, it is. It's a continued public hearing.
Oh, there, uh, I mean, I assume, Mr. Conway, you've, uh, completed your presentation, is, uh, are there any members of the public?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. I did, thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to be recognized?
You need to open, I mean, okay, you're right. Continuing. If you want to speak, can you raise your hand? I think I saw two hands before. Uh, Danielle Meehan.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name's Danielle Meehan. Um, I live at eighteen Ackerman Avenue. I'm also president of Coupon Citizens United to protect our neighborhoods. Um, I just, there was, um, the house that was brought up, um, on Madison Hill that was used as comparison is not appropriate. It is a shawl, it's a house of worship, just so you know, um, and it's a large house, but I don't think it's, this is a private home you're discussing. It's not an appropriate, um, comparison. Um, I had the opportunity to look into the types of soil that is, um, with a soil scientist, actually, who used to, uh, be on the zoning board of appeals. Um, and the type of, um, this is called Weathersfield soil, according to the United States Department of Agriculture Soil Survey, which has a moderate to high erosion problem. Um, I think once you start taking those trees down, and I know that they're planning on replacing them, but removing very old trees um, and putting saplings there is a big difference in water absorption. Um, I think there's gonna.
This, Mia, one of, uh, have you been sworn in for before? Uh, if you're testifying and giving, uh, testimony, you really should be, uh.
Okay, okay.
You, uh, affirm that the information you're about, you were giving, uh, to be true and accurate, the best of your knowledge.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, continue, please.
That's quite all right. Um, I believe once you start removing the trees, and this is a hill, the water's gonna go downhill, um, and it's gonna end up going down to the Route fifty-nine in the Armont intersection, probably pulling a lot of dirt with it. There is already pretty significant, um, problems with drainage and flooding. Um, I also think, um, Pondview, which is the housing complex, um, immediately next, well, very close to these houses, um, I think is gonna have a problem with flooding. I guess my question is, if this happens, is the village liable for something like that? If, um, you know, people get damaged to their homes after this is appro, if this is approved? I guess that would be a Dan Crashhour question. I don't see him, though.
No, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
He's there.
So, Dan, is the village liable for something like that, if as a consequence of the tree removal?
Danielle, for thirty-two years, I've been asked this question.
Yes.
And I've never, I've, I've never answered it.
All right. So, um, and, um, uh, with all due respect to the people I know who have been waiting a long time to build this house, um, the neighbors are really accustomed to heavily wooded lot. Um, and to build it, a lot of trees are gonna have to be removed, and it's really gonna change their view. And it is gonna be seen. Um, and I get a, you know, um, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, but a lot of these people have lived there for over fifty years, and it's a tough thing to get used to. Okay, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Mia. Uh, is there anyone else wishing, for the public wishing to be recognized?
Any other hands raised?
What, there are more people, you're saying, Suzanne?
Do not see anyone else. No, no hands are raised.
Hands are, yes, raised?
Are not.
Not raised, okay. All right, so, um, you said we had GMLs to, uh, put into the record, or did that yet?
Well, the GML was put into the record, but depending on when you go to approve it, we gotta go through it, correct, Dan? Because it recommended modifications, in particular, number one.
I, I did put a response in too, which I believe you have, yeah.
Uh, when did you?
It's dated back December tenth.
Oh, hold on. Let me get that folder. Sorry.
Okay.
Uh, the GML that I have is December fourth.
Hold on a second. It might be from the December meeting, which we actually did in January. Well done. All right. Looking for it, sorry. Uh, because that was not given to the new members. That should have been resubmitted.
Conway, I have an October twelfth letter from you.
Hold on, I have so much paper. I'm looking for it.
No, but for, for a December GML, and Kevin saying he responded in December, I think that, that those are the two documents that would, uh, apply.
Well done. Then it's probably for the January meeting. Was it an email, or was it an actual?
Uh, it was an email, email and fax, both.
Hold on, I'm still looking. Apologize, but I don't have it at my fingertips.
It's my, uh, it's a very short response. It was items, uh, one through ten total. So I, and I have the letter, I can read the letter in from the, uh, Department of Planning. And I can read in my response if you want.
Okay.
Do that, please, uh, Mr. Conway?
Yep.
On the GML, or should we hear it, it's fast before we go over the GML?
Your choice. It's probably make more sense if I, um, did GML in first, but.
GML first, okay, we'll do that. I accept that.
But it's dated December fourth, and it was addressed to the, uh, zoning board of appeals, Department of Planning. It references the application. It says reason for the referral, and it references the application. It says that the county department of planning has reviewed the above item, and acting under the GML powers, recommends the following modifications. So it was not a, um.
Oh, I remember that.
It's not a disapproval, but a, uh, recommend with following modifications. Item one permitting development that does not comply with applicable bulk standards can set an undesirable land use precedent and result in the overutilization of individual sites. The lot area is seventy-four percent of the required minimum. The development coverage exceeds the max limit by a hundred and sixty percent, and the floor area ratio exceeds the maximum limit by forty-five percent. The ability of the existing infrastructure to accommodate increased residential density on undersized parcels is a candy-wide concern, must be evaluated. This evaluation must consider whether the local roads will become congested, and the sewer and stormwater management systems and public water supply will be overburdened. The village must consider the cumulative and regional impacts permitting such development. The proposed structure must reduce inside the close, size to closely perform to village's bulk requirement. And then my letter, uh, dealt with that item, which is dated December tenth. And I put in response, it should be noted, the Department of Planning reply is not a denial letter, but rather a recommendation with modifications. You can undersign on behalf of the applicant, and we recommend the board override such description of the application setting an undesirable land use precedent, or would result in increased residential density. The Department of Planning ignores the previous historical record of the site, including that it was previously granted approvals in twenty-five subdivision for lot area width and street frontage as a flag lot. This application is in keeping with the prior approvals, and lot size can properly support the construction of this proposed family resident, single-family residence, which is permitted as a right in the R forty zone. Remaining items listed two through, and I'm gonna read in also, but for those remaining items, uh, my response was just to take under advisement and not objected to requiring any override of the board. Um, and then item two, going back to the county letter, the review must be completed by the Rockland Department of Health to ensure compliance with the mosquito control and sanitary, sanitary code. Item three, a review must be completed by Sewer District One, and all required permits obtained. Item four, the review must be undertaken by the Department of Highways and any required permits obtained. And then Department of Highway actually did a, uh, review that was dated in November. I believe that's what Mr. Chairman Cass referred to. Item five, to reduce the, uh, maximum development coverage, variance, previous, previous papers must be used whenever possible. Item six, public sewer mains require extensions with right-of-way or an easement, which we talked about before, shall be reviewed and approved by the County Department of Health prior to construction. Item seven, the map notes must include district information. Item eight, referral for the general municipal law review and narrative by fast-forward permits indicate that the lot area is twenty-five, five, thirty-nine square feet. The bulk table indicates a lot of areas twenty-nine, five, thirty-nine square feet. The narrative and referral must be corrected. The public hearing notes must be reviewed if, if it contains any inaccurate information. Item nine, pursuant to GML section two thirty-nine M and two thirty-nine N. If any of the conditions of this GML review are overridden by the board, then the local land use morbus file a report with the County Department of Planning when final action is taken. If final action is contrary to the recommendation, then the board must state the reasons. And then ten, the last item, with the executive order oh-one of twenty-seventeen, signed by the county executive dated May twenty-two of twenty-seventeen. County departments are prohibited from issuing county permit, license, or approval until the report is filed with the county commissioner of planning. Applicant must provide to the county agency, which has jurisdiction, copy of the commissioner's report approving the proposed action or copy of the Department of Planning recommendations. They modify or disapprove. And again, this was a modify now that this, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Conley. You saved me your job. Uh, Dan, um, I, I don't think I think he do that's denying anything here. I mean, we can, we, if we comply with everything in the letter, we don't have to override anything. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I know, Mr. Chairman, I.
The, the impervious, the previous pavers.
That won't work.
I think that was an issue.
Yeah, that won't work. We did testing out there. It does not work for infiltration out the site, which is why we proposed a detention rather than a retention system.
So that one, uh, Kevin, why do you think number one required, required an override?
Uh, well, I prefaced it is that it was just not a denial letter, but rather a recommendation with modification. So that's, I was calling in an override when I first mentioned it, but in my letter, I don't mention it that way.
Well, the.
Point out, I just point out that, you know, their perspective, they didn't take into account prior approvals. And that the, um, if the board otherwise treated it that way, that it would be an override. But I would agree that, again, it's, you know, normally you always get a, uh, nine times out of ten, you'll get a.
Well, it's a must or shall.
Yes. Uh, this was a request for modification.
Right. Um, but the, uh, uh, impervious one would have to.
Correct.
Would, would require an override.
Would advise the reasons. For that purpose.
Uh, was that number eight? Which one are we referring to?
That was number, I believe that's correct. Hold on a moment. That was number. No, that was, uh, just give me a moment. That was number five.
And if the board were to do that, uh, I would recommend, uh, Mr. Sparacco, uh, recreating the language that he used as to the justification for the override.
Do you want me to recreate it now?
Yeah, could you, please?
Sure.
Yep.
We did a soil testing out on the site. The soils were not, uh, compatible for infiltration. So, as much as we'd like to accommodate and act with their request for previous papers, you have to have soils that actually have good percolation. And in this case, these Weathersfield soils at the site were tested, and they're not good enough for infiltration, which is why, um, we have remained with pavement and also why we have a detention system designed for the drainage.
And a what?
A detention system.
Detention. I couldn't hear you. Thank you.
Detention, right. That would be considered compliance with this, uh, Dan? Cuz of the languages where possible. Uh, purpose papers must be used wherever possible, and Mrs. Sparacco has said it's not possible.
Right.
Is that?
Yes. And ironically, it also takes care of Mrs., uh, Mia's point. Um, because they're acknowledging the problem with the soil, uh, and they came up with, um, a means of handling, um, the, uh, runoff. By virtue of the, uh, detention basin. Am I correct in saying that, or?
Yeah, the detention basin, we also have erosion control mitigation on the site as well to accommodate any runoff, uh, from when you, wherever you disturb a site, you're gonna rip up the ground. It's gonna get all, you know, the contractors have to work with what they work with. Uh, you do your best means possible to put self-fencing, sediment, uh, uh, sediment erosion control measures to, uh, mitigate against having soil, dirty soil runoff. That's what that refers to.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, I think we've covered the GML and Mr. Conway's response, uh, letter or memo. Now, I also have, um, something from the highway department. And, uh, what else is here? Rockland County Sewer District, number one. And, um, Town of Ramapo, Department of Public Works. What's that? Yes. Okay. Uh, do those need to be read into the record, uh, Dan?
I think they were read into the record.
I think so too.
The only item that was never read into the record was the updated, um, memo from the village engineer, Arthur, and you spoke to her about it, and everything was fine?
Yes. Uh, she told me that it's basically been complied with.
She first did a letter December twentieth, and then she did a second letter in May.
You got that file? I think I have that letter.
I have it right here. Uh, May twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, and she just had twelve minor items, but, um, I don't know. Do we need to read them all, Dan?
Uh, has Mr. Sparacco seen it? On mute.
Steve, you're muted. Okay.
Sorry about that. I can share the, uh, the letter with you all if you'd like to see it.
Or you're complying, are you complying with all twelve comments?
Uh, everyone except for she, uh, in her letter, she mentions doing perk tests. Again, I've already done the, the work on that. I know it's not going to work. So we did a detention system instead of retention, and I'll clear that up with her. That's not a problem. I think she just didn't realize.
Okay.
But the rest of the items are fine.
Okay. Um, moving along then, uh, any, uh, discussion by members of the board? Is anyone, anything to say?
Did? Um, I lost my train of thought because I just saw my, uh, wife and son come back with a car velg bag. And they never asked me if I wanted anything, so, um, uh, did, did you guys vote on the override?
No.
Not yet.
It wasn't necessary. So he said it wasn't necessary because of that overriding anything.
No, you are.
Are, we're over.
The one comment, yeah, the previous.
Previous favors.
Yep.
I thought Mr. Katz proposed that we do not need to override because the comment said we're possible, and it's been demonstrated that it's not possible.
Well, we're overriding it by explanation. Okay.
Explanation for the override.
All right. So what do we, do we vote on that? An override? I mean, you said where it's possible and possible, but okay, so that's why we're overriding it. Is that enough?
He's, he's explaining why it can't be done and what he did to, um, ameliorate their concerns. Um, so it, it's in essence, uh, they can't comply with it. They say why they can't comply with it, and then they say that not only, um, are we just leaving it at that, but we've come up with a, uh, a note, an alternate solution that, I don't know, for lack of a better term, uh, is equal or better to what they're, they were recommending.
Okay, we'll adopt that as the board statement.
Well, why don't we have a motion, a second, and then a vote?
Okay. Who wants to go over the motion? Don't be shy now, Con.
I could make the motion, but I, I, I need some assistance from learned counsel on that.
Well, Mr. Sparacco gave Suzanne the language.
Can you read that language, please?
So the, the override would, uh, motion would be that this soil testing is not capable for the influ- infiltration, and that they, in order to have the good soils, the percolation, it's not a good enough for the influ- infiltration and detention system was designed in.
So can this motion be to adopt, you know, this language?
Yes. Okay. The rationale.
Right.
For the override.
Okay, so that's my, uh, my motion for override, to adopt that language.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Have we Sheldon Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's have a call, roll call.
Okay, um, Robin Lukens?
Yes.
Marty Cavell?
Yes.
Sheldon Meyer?
Yes.
Scott Meyer?
Yes.
Arthur Cavell?
Arthur Katz.
Katz, I'm sorry.
Cousins, we're cousins.
Yes.
I apologize.
Okay, he's insulted at me.
No, I'm not.
The most characters unanimously five to zero.
Okay, so that's, so that's done.
For the override for number five, okay.
All right, now, um, I guess, um, anyone wanna make a secret motion here?
I'll make.
Type-two action.
I'll make the secret motion that'd be, uh,
deemed to be a.
Listed as a, as a type-two action under the state.
Require.
Quality Review Act.
Requiring no further review.
Requiring no further review or action.
You have a second.
Welcome.
Does anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a vote on that.
Roll the roll.
Miss, uh, Robin Lukens?
What do I, I agree. I'm trying to think the right wording.
I just say I, Sheldon Meyer?
I.
I.
Marty Cavell?
Yes.
Scott Meyer?
Yes.
Arthur Katz?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Okay, now we're ready for the big one. Um, do we have a motion on the application?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
I didn't make it yet.
Oh, I thought you, I didn't know you had to go through all the wording. I'm sorry.
Well, am I not? No, I need to make a motion. May I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm just being formal. I like the formalities of, uh, this democratic process. All right. Uh, make a motion to, uh, prove the application. Twenty-four South Airmont Road for construction of a new single-family residence, requiring variances for lot with one sixty feet required. Uh, there's one hundred and twenty-five feet, uh, profi-, uh, excuse me, provided. So, uh, the request there is for what? Thirty-five, uh, feet of variance. Uh, street frontage, uh, one hundred feet, uh, required and, um, twenty-five point, uh, zero, seven feet provided. Uh, the math on that, uh, seventy.
Seventy-four point nine-three.
Point nine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Boy, you're quick. Point nine-three, you know, that would be the variance. Uh, developmental coverage, coverage twenty percent required and fifty percent required, provided. Uh, requesting a thirty percent, um, developmental coverage variance. And, uh, maximum lot, uh, area required is forty thousand square feet and twenty-nine thousand, five, thirty-nine square feet provided for a various request of Suzanne.
Four sixty-one.
Of how much?
Ten thousand, four sixty-one.
Ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-one, uh, square feet. Uh, from Article four, Use Regulation, Section two-ten-twenty-nine, and Section two-ten-fifteen of the Village of Airmont zoning code. And, uh, the lot is designated as Section fifty-five point one-one, Block three, and Lot twenty-three point two on the Town of Ramapo tax map, and this is, uh, loc-, uh, known as, uh, twenty-four South Airmont Road, Airmont, New York. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Uh, hold on. Uh,
Did I mess up there, Dan? Did I?
Not at all.
Thank you.
But, uh, add a condition, I would recommend.
I'm listening.
Add a condition that the applicant, um, file a road maintenance agreement, um, with the Rockland County clerk, um, uh, and supply a copy of same, uh, to, uh, the, uh, planning and zoning board clerk.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can I have, uh, our secretary clerk, um, add that to the language of my motion?
Hundred percent. Yes, certainly do it, please.
Okay, so that would be complete, and with the added of that, uh, condition, um, with the wording used exactly by our learned counsel.
Yeah.
I need a second, please.
I'll second. Oh, actually, Robin was gonna second that.
I, I seconded, yes.
Okay. Well, please.
Wait, discussion.
Oh, discussion. Definitely discussed it so much, right?
It's democratic. Democratic.
Is there any discussion by the board members?
I, I just wanna say, listen, um, I probably would like to see somewhat of a, you know, would probably be, you know, the best-case scenario somewhat of a smaller, uh, residence being, you know, to be constructed on that. But, uh, you know, given the, um,
Where are the invitations?
Giving the various, uh, attempts of subtraction and desires of the property owners. And given that there are some larger, uh, residences in, in our village, in the, in the region, you know, I just felt, um, well, that's why I was acting positively, uh, with suggesting this motion. That's all.
Okay. Any other discussions? None. Uh, and, um, and I lost track. Did, uh, did you call the roll yet, Suzanne?
No.
No.
Let's, let's do that. Let's call the roll.
Okay, I'll do the roll call. Sheldon Meyer?
I'm in favor.
Any.
For the reasons well stated by Marty. Um, I also would have liked to see something slightly smaller, but I think it's, uh, been demonstrated that, uh, the applicants really worked hard to comply with all the, uh, concerns of the engineer. And they sort of been dealt, uh, you know, a difficult deck with the, with the cash twenty-two situation they've found themselves in.
Okay. Um, Robin Lukens? You're muted. I gotta unmute.
Vote in favor. I pressed the wrong button. Sorry about that.
That's okay. And can you just give me? And can you just give me a reason for the record?
Okay, um, I feel they presented their case fairly and they have a valid point under the circumstances and I don't think there's s- strong evidence to the contrary.
Okay. Uh, um, uh, Scott Meyer?
Okay, I've been with this since, uh, the beginning. Kevin and Steve, you did a great job with your presentations and your documents. The homeowner, I have been listening to the neighbors, I've heard your public comments and the senior letters. Lou, I've also listened to your letters and everything on this. Uh, but at this time, I believe you guys hear us, but you're not listening. Uh, the size of this house, I believe, is way too big for this lot. If you were to come back and drop to two thousand square feet, I would be a lot more positive, but this time I, uh, I decline or say I I do not agree with this.
Okay. Um, Marty Cavell?
Uh, you know, like I I just mentioned, I'm gonna vote yes, but like I just mentioned, you know, I would have appreciated somewhat smaller on the lot, but also looking at the calculations with the, um, with the flag pole, as they call it, you know, sort of, um, directing calculations to maybe with all that, you know, impervious square footage. Um, and flag lots not being, uh, every lot in the world that exists around us being, you know, more of a rarity. So I sort of, you know, bend my decision towards the approval of, uh, uh, this this application, and I don't really feel, you know, all in all, uh, it would detract from, uh, the character of the neighborhood.
All right. And Chairman Katz?
I'm gonna vote yes, so, uh, I feel that the, um, applicant, uh, is being, um, taxed twenty-two by the change in the law and the, um, strange calculation of including the the flagpole, uh, area for some things and not for other things. Uh, and, uh, there has been, uh, serious attempt to comply as best as possible with what's required of them, so I vote yes.
Okay. So motion carries four to one. Application is approved.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank everyone, uh, Mr. Katz, Mr. Cavell, Miss Lukens, and also Mr. Meyer. And, uh,
You're welcome.
Scott Meyer and Mr. Mayor, I, because I know this was a tough one for the board and I appreciate board is always very diligent, very thoughtful, so whichever way it goes, I always appreciate the, uh, board seriousness and how they approach these. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next case.
Before you do that, excuse me, um, does Mr. Berger wanna come in here and I will?
I'm, I'm here.
What, what, Mr. Berger, I understand, came in and they said that after we
All right.
decided on this motion, he could take over.
Yes. Dan, you see it goes by the case, that by the session, is that right?
Correct, correct.
All right, so then, uh, Mr. Berger, you resume, uh, uh, your status as a member for this, for the rest of the cases. And we want to thank Ms. Lukens for her wonderful efforts and helping us get through this night, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, you're on. All right, uh, moving along, the third item on the agenda. Uh, continuing public hearing application of the Cholmer Roya, uh, Religious Corporation for Variances from Article Four, Section two ten dash eight of the Village of Airmont zoning code. The maximum developmental coverage and proposed both dimensions is nine percent for establishment of a cemetery. They provide for the formation of approximately, um, ten thousand two hundred plus or minus graves in twenty sections and provides for forty-eight vehicles and ancillary driving lanes and walking paths to grave sites. Property is located on the, it is the RR fifty zoning district and is comprised of nineteen point two acres. The street address is forty-four Hillside Avenue, Airmont, North, one oh nine fifty-two. All right, is there anyone here for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Baum with Montevallo Condon and Frank, sixty-seven North Main Street, attorney for, uh, the applicant. I also have with me is, uh, Greg Fouchet, attorney with White Men, Austin, Manhattan, my co-counsel, as well as David Ziegler and, um, Vahid Rastami from Atso, Nasher and Ziegler, the engineers project. So we were last before the board, uh, on May thirteenth, and we introduced the project. And, um, since that time, we've been back to the planning board, the planning board rendered a negative declaration with regard to this project on May twenty-seventh that now, uh, allows this board to to move ahead and vote on the application. Um, since that time, we've also been before the County of Rockland Legislature and they've consented to the formation and operation of this, uh, cemetery. So, um, as set forth in, uh, my application materials that we submitted, uh, the four one narrative in support. This is an application for, uh, a cemetery, um, on nineteen point two three acres. We're going to propose about ten thousand, uh, grave sites and parking for forty-eight vehicles. The, the site will have ingress and egress from, from the road, uh, the parking lot, and then a loop road that goes up around the cemetery so that, um, uh, visitors to the sites can access the the grave sites. The development coverage for cemetery, um, by your code is a maximum of three percent. It's an extremely, extremely s- small percentage of development coverage. Um, we are looking for nine percent. Nine percent is also an extremely small amount of coverage. And, and as I think I indicated last time, just to keep it in perspective, um, if we wanted to build a freestanding place of worship, we would allow the development coverage of twenty-five percent. If we wanted to do, develop a school, we would be allowed a development coverage of twenty-five percent. If we wanted to build a hospital, we would be allowed a coverage of thirty percent. If we wanted to build a neighborhood place of worship, we would be allowed a development coverage of forty-five percent. If we wanted to build even a home on this premises, we would be allowed a development coverage of twenty percent. All these other uses, either by right or by special permit, allow development coverage of double and up to nine times the amount of the development coverage that we're seeking for this project. And the, and the, uh, our project does not involve the construction of any structures. There's no buildings. We're looking to plant grass, lawn area, a pass, the passive, pastoral, almost park-like setting. So, um, I I I think by keeping this in perspective, the board can see that that what we're asking for is really not a significant, uh, a significant amount of relief based upon the other uses that we can have. And if I could, uh, Suzanne, if I can share my screen, I'd like to show the board what three percent development coverage represents on this, on this nineteen point two three acres.
Go ahead, you have permission.
Thank you. So, share screen. Here's Hillside Avenue. Here's the entrance. Here's the parking lot, and here's the exit. What shaded in orange is three percent development coverage. That's all we'd be allowed by code. The only additional thing we want to put in here is we want to put a road. It comes up, loops around, it comes back down, it's not a wide road, it's not a boulevard. It's only about twenty feet wide. If, if we didn't have this road, if a mourner wanted to pay the respects to somebody who's buried up in section, I think this is eighteen, I can't see the number right now, they would have to walk a couple hundred feet to visit the grave site. As you know, in most cemeteries, you drive in, you pull alongside, you stop, you pay your visits, you leave some flowers, you put a stone on the headstone, and you leave. Um, that's all we're looking for, we're not looking for excessive development coverage, excessive pavement. We're not looking for any structures. We're looking for the minimum amount of, um, development coverage that we need for the operation of the cemetery and nothing more. And I think that anybody looking at this plan could see, three percent is just a very small and unreasonable amount. If I can show you one other thing, and I want to show the board, back in two thousand and five, this project was proposed for this, this site. This was congregation Mishkinois, Love Yar Yakov. This site pursuant to federal court litigation and a stipulation with the federal court would allow for a yeshiva alone with a single building for the purpose of housing a hundred and seventy unmarried students in a dormitory style. And thirty dwelling units for married students and faculty consisting of ten buildings with each building containing three residential units. I think everybody could agree that the development that's being proposed by this project is extremely more significant than we're proposing by our project. This project only had a development coverage of twenty-one point four percent. This project would be allowed without any variance from the zoning for development coverage. But this project requires variance. So I I don't think that, uh, the two are comparable. Even though we're seeking development coverage of three times the amount that's permitted by code, it's a very, very small amount compared to the other uses. A stormwater management plan has been prepared, it's been submitted to the village engineer, it's been approved. We'll have a stormwater pollution plan that will be in compliance with New York State DEC regulations. So there'll be no impact of runoff from any surface water run runoff due to this additional coverage. So that's basically our project in a nutshell. We, we did submit at the request of the board our traffic impact study as well as our traffic management plan that we had developed um, for the planning board with regard to the project showing that the impacts from this project on traffic are insignificant. Um, all traffic will continue to operate at what they call Level of Service A on Hillside Avenue. We have developed a traffic management plan in the rare and extremely, um, rare case that there is a significant amount of traffic that comes for an extremely beloved mourner. We have a plan to park cars off-site and to bus them in, and that plan i- is under review by the village planning board. And as I indicated, they've looked at these traffic impacts and they've determined that they're insignificant and they've already rendered a negative declaration. Um, I've also submitted to you a narrative summary that responds to the comments from the general municipal law review by the Rockland County Department of Planning. The, the county planning department did a review on April nineteenth. They had recommended modifications, they had seven comments. Um, we have no objections with five of the comments, but we are requesting that the board override two of the county's comments. Those, uh, those requested overrides are set forth in my narrative summary, I believe, is dated May fourteenth. The first comment that we're seeking an override from is with regard to the wetlands on the site. So let me bring up the, the current plans. So if you can see, here are the federal wetlands that have been mapped uh, and delineated by the wetlands consultant. This is the one hundred foot buffer around the wetlands. So we have two little pockets. Here's the second wetland and the hundred foot buffer around the second wetlands. We're not coming close to these wetlands, we're not even coming close to the buffers. These grave sites, which are in phase three, are at least two hundred feet from the wetlands and probably, uh, a hundred and fifty, now, I'd say they're at least a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet just from the buffer. Um, so their comment is that the review needs to be completed by the Army Corps of Engineers and any required permits obtained. Um, because we're not disturbing the wetlands and we're not disturbing any of the buffer around the wetlands. Uh, no permit by the Army Corps of Engineer is going to be required. And we do not think that a review is required, even though, as I understand it from Suzanne, the plans were referred to the Army Corps of Engineers, but would not hurt anything.
That's correct.
Can't compel them to respond. So we're asking the board to override that comment three of the GML letter uh, that mandates a review by the Army Corps of Engineers. The other comment that we're asking the board to override is their comment four, which, as you indicate, you you discussed in the previous application, they had requested to reduce the extent of the development coverage that we use pervious pavers or other porous materials wherever possible. There really is no opportunity here to use pervious or porous materials. And even if we did, under your code, you don't get credit for it against the development coverage. So even if we were to use porous pavers or porous pavement for this entire loop road up around the development and back down, we would still need a variance because, under your code, we still have to count that area as part of our development coverage. So using porous pavers or or porous, um, materials does not reduce the development coverage. As, in fact, your, your engineer is not in favor of them because even though in many cases, sometimes these porous pavers are, um, allow water to infiltrate in the beginning, over time, the, uh, the paper is silt up and they don't allow the infiltration and you still get the runoff. So they're not really helpful in reducing development coverage and helping infiltration of water. So, um, a- and and there really is no good opportunity on this site to use those things. So we're asking you to override that. Instead, we have developed the stormwater management plan that's going to detain the water that is gathered from the driveways and roadways into a detention basin in the front of the property. And that water will be allowed to infiltrate and there will be an overflow that will run out into the town of Ramapo's offsite drainage, and that will be subject to review and approval by the town of Ramapo. So that will be no impacts from, uh, runoff. And the planning board has already determined that there will be no significant impacts in rendering their negative declaration for this site. So we're asking the board to override comments. And that will be subject to review and approval by the Town of Ramapo. So that will be no impacts from runoff. And the planning board has already determined that there will be no significant impacts in rendering their negative declaration for this site. So we're asking the board to override comments number two, I mean, comments number three and four of the GML. And to grant the applicant the variance for this development coverage to allow 9% development coverage for this project. And that's about all I have to add. And
Mr. Chairman?
Sharing.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions, if I may.
Yes, please.
And it's really, you know, it's, it's just related to the development as a whole, as opposed to the, you know, the variance necessary that's being requested. One is, yeah, again, I, I might be out of line, but it's just the thought that there is no provision for a rest room or rooms on, on this cemetery property. And number two, I also have concerns about future maintenance of the property and are there going to be provisions, I guess, by the trustees of this cemetery to have appropriate funding for perpetual maintenance? You know, and, and, and for it to, you know, be well cared for property in perpetuity.
I imagine you're asking that of Mr. Bound, right?
Yes, yes.
So with regard to, I'll, I'll handle the perpetual maintenance first.
Right.
The, the oversight of, of cemeteries is, is, is done by the state attorney general's office as in conjunction with the state comptroller's office. And whatever legal requirements there are for perpetual care will be complied with. And it'll be regulated and overseen by the state of New York as, as is every other single cemetery within the state. So there will be adequate funds for the maintenance, long-term maintenance of the cemetery for now and, and well into the future. With regard to your concern for restrooms, I understand, Mr. Kavell, that you may have a concern, but most, most of the funerals occur, they're over within an hour. Visitors will come, they will stay for the service, short service, the burial, and then they leave. There's, nobody's going to be here for an extended period of time where we need to have restroom facilities. If people, you know, we've all gone to many places. We've gone to public parks that don't have restrooms. I've gone to many cemeteries that don't have and if they do have a restroom in an office building, those, those office buildings are normally closed on certain times of the day, on, on, on Sundays and Saturdays. So many, many cemeteries do not have restroom facilities. It's not mandated by law. We don't see the need for it.
Just asking.
I just don't think there's, it, it's, it's really a great health concern. People use the restroom before they get here. If they have to go to the restroom, they can go down the road into a restaurant, into a Dunkin' Donuts, buy a cup of coffee, use the bathroom, and they're on their way.
I'm just asking. I just needed to raise that just due to my own personal travels through life. That's all.
That's, that's fine. I, I hope we've, you know, addressed your concerns adequately.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? I, I would just like to make a note that we, the village zoning board has gotten some communications from the trustees of the next door cemetery concerning whether they got proper notice or not. And all proper notice was given to the actresses enlisted with us in the village. And so that has been totally complied with. It was raised at the planning board and dealt with there and complied with, shown to be compliance there and is certainly also in compliance here at the zoning board. Okay. Where are we up to this now? Okay, so what's any member, any further members of the zoning board have any questions to put forward? I don't see any.
I make a motion to, what? Continue the public hearing on this?
Yeah.
Can I do that? Okay.
Yes, you made a motion. Is anyone seconding?
I second that.
Okay, motion seconded. Okay. Is anyone from the public wishing to be recognized?
Jacob.
Jacob wishes to be recognized? Okay.
Did you want to say something, Jacob?
Yeah. You hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
One second.
Hi, my name is Jacob Levkowicz. I'm actually here on behalf of a family member that owns the adjacent property of this.
Mr. Jacobs, could you give your name, address, and affirm that that you give us is true? The best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. Yes, and my name is Jacob Levkowicz. My address is my address is 15 Edbrock Lane, Irmont, New York. And I'm here on behalf of a family member that owns the adjacent property from this complex. From this potential, from this potential.
On behalf? Are you testifying? Are you representing somebody?
Yes. Not represent, I'm, I'm I'm, I am going to represent on behalf of a family member.
So I'm not sure, so what are you, what is your status here? You're telling that on your own personal knowledge, but based on what the family member has told you?
Yes, but it's, it's, it's knowledge, not so much knowledge, it is, it is fact, not, it's not, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna present fact, not, not
This is fact, you know, if you've been told.
Can you tell us which property you're talking, which property are you talk, are you referring to?
76 Hillside Avenue.
Thank you.
And now, one second, the information you're giving, is that your own personal knowledge or is that what you've heard from someone else?
It is, I, it's not necessarily need to be heard from somebody else. It is, it is basically a fact. You look at the map, it's a fact.
One second, you know this from your own knowledge? But you're about to tell us, you know it from your own knowledge. Okay. Go forward, please.
Okay, so I'm basically representing a family member that owns a property, that owns the adjacent property, actually. It is almost the adjacent property, is one, one up from the, from the potential cemetery. It is basically the idea of, of putting a cemetery behind somebody's window where somebody's going, somewhere, somebody's sleeping, having, having a cemetery within 30 feet. And he asked me to ask to discuss the idea that this variance should not be given. They should try to keep, they should try to keep at least 100 feet away from, from this, from, from this house. And, you know, the, the cemetery is, they're, they're proposing a 10,200, a 10,200 plot cemetery. God willing, it is not going to be needed to be so big and it's not going ever to be used. But if potentially they're needed, they can, eventually they could potentially come back and get more, get additional variances. But at this point, why don't they just apply for 5,000 to 6,000 plots? This way they can keep the distance away from the, from the property line. The distance that is required, I believe it is 100 feet. Am I correct? Is it 100 feet that they need to keep away? If not, if they wouldn't get the variance?
Are you asking your question, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
If you, if you'd like, Chairman Katz, I can respond to that.
Okay, please do.
The, the first comment I want to make is, is we're not here for variance to allow these grave sites to be within 100 feet of adjacent properties. We're only here for the development coverage. Under the village's zoning law, depending if you, certain special uses, if the planning board finds that these uses will adversely impact the residential use of adjacent properties, they may impose a buffer equal to the 100-foot setback. And they can also reduce that buffer if they find substitute measures are implemented to protect the adjacent properties. In this case, we have requested that the planning board not require a buffer because we're not putting in any structures. We're not putting in any sort of buildings that are going to be disruptive. This area is going to be grass. And we don't feel that we need a buffer to a lawn area. And we have an extensive landscape plan that's going to provide Norway spruce all around the border of the property along with shade tree and, and street trees that will create a, a, a nice buffer to the, to the property so that this cemetery will adequately stream from residential properties. But that's an issue that's before the planning board. It's really not a variance that we're seeking from this board. The only relief we seek from this board is for the development coverage of 9%.
Understood, understood. So basically, our, our issue is the idea of having a cemetery, of having a cemetery, you know, on your need to window where somebody's going to sleep and in the backyard, the other cemetery. So that's what I'm saying, if they can, you know, I know they're proposing 10,200 plots. I don't think it will ever be used. I don't think 2,000 will be used. Why the need of such big cemetery?
The cemetery, the cemetery is designed to serve the Jewish, the Jewish population for years and years and years to come. We, we, we are planning for cemetery use for the next 50 or 60 years. And, and that's, that's what we're here for. This cemetery is not going to be filled up that quickly. This is something that's going to be over the next 50 years. If, if you look at the Ascension Cemetery, the Ascension Cemetery, which is right next door, has been there since 1967. I understand that they've done about 4,000 burials there since that time. And they now have plans to develop another 165 acres of their site. So they have 35 developed and they want to develop another 165. We're asking for 10 acres. That's it. We've got a 19.23 acre property. We're asking for 10 acres so that we can develop a cemetery and provide appropriate burial grounds for the Jewish community for the next 40, 50, 60 years. And that's why we're proposing it.
Understood, exactly. But again, that's exactly why I was, again, I'm, don't want to go back and forth, just want to, again, this, this, I think this makes my comment stronger in regards to the idea, why don't you keep the cemetery more towards the back? No, no, I don't, more towards the, the, I don't know if it's northern side or eastern side, you know, keep it, keep it, if you can, if you can apply now for 5,000 plots and eventually if you need more, you're welcome to come and apply for more. But at the moment, at least keep the cemetery away from the residential housing.
I, I think you're talking about Mr. Tabak Slot? Is that correct, Mr. Levkowicz?
Yes.
So
Yes.
The property behind Mr. Tabak's lot is not going to be developed to the third phase of this project. So it, it is, it is a way off. And the grave sites, I think, are probably going to be in excess of 40 feet, 50 feet from his rear property line. And then his house is probably, I don't know, 100 or more feet from his rear property line of, of, of all trees. So he's going to have 100 feet of trees, Norway spruce, as well as shade trees planted that would totally screen this use from his property. And the only thing that's going to be on the other side of those trees is, is again, is, is grass. Some headstones, not the structure as I indicated, not yeshiva, not 30 units of housing in 10, three family dwellings and, and not a dormitory. We, so we think that this use is about as passive and, and as, as you can find for, for this property and it fits in with the community, there are other cemeteries in the area. This is no bigger than, than you know, the cemeteries that, as they're developed right now. And, and that's going to be it. So I, I understand your concern and I, I did invite Mr. Tabak to discuss the project and he had declined.
Next person.
Okay, what is the, what is the buffer, what is the buffer from the property line? What is the buffer from the property line to the first part where, you know, to the third phase, as you said?
Dave, can you jump in and take that since you've got all those measurements available?
Yeah, the, from the property line to the edge of pavement, it's going to be at 45, 40 foot, say 40, and then the pavement's 20 foot, that's 60. Then you have another reserve, so it's going to be about 65 foot from the property line to the first plot.
And this is to the back and to the side?
There's another lot.
The side is about the same thing. Side is 40, well, on the other side of your neighbor, but that's 42 foot, then you have a 20-foot road and then you have a two-foot reserve, so you're about 65 foot.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is anyone else who wishes to speak?
Person is
Zalman Rubin.
Alman, hi, Zalman.
I, I just want to say
Mr. Rubin?
Somebody.
Mr. Rubin, Mr. Rubin, could you and you affirm that the information you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, as somebody that lives in this village for about 24 years, and I can say that, you know, with the previous plan that was presented on this property, I don't believe there's anyone that was happy with that plan. Although it was allowed under the settlement. I can say that although it's not right next to my house, but if you know, the village starts along multi-housing developments, it's going to spread all over. And I want to live in a nice peaceful neighborhood with a lot of trees. If I would be the neighboring, neighbor of this property, other than there's a need to, a large portion of Amont residents and residents in Rockland in general would probably want to use this cemetery. But if I would live next door, I would probably send them a thank you note for not building, you know, property with probably hundreds of thousands of square foot and there will be hundreds of people around there all the time on a very slim street. And I, I personally, you know, I, I, I just think that we should all be happy that instead of building, you know, multiple buildings, that they're building something that I don't think they're going to come up from the graves and walk. So that's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Is there anyone else who wishes?
One, one, one other thing personally. I mean, I understand they said they don't propose bathrooms. I will, I, I appreciate what Mr. Kavall said. And I think, you know, the board actually should allow them to at least build a couple of bedrooms because if I walk from my house to there, probably going to need to use it.
Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak?
That, that was, I was, I just unmuted.
Yes, yes. Hello, this is Matt.
Hello.
Perici.
What is your address, sir?
I'm, I'm the attorney on behalf of the trustees of St. Patrick, who are the owners of the joining property to Ascension Cemetery.
Sir, and you agree that you affirm?
He's an attorney.
He's an attorney. Attorney, okay, so you're allowed to lie, all right, go ahead.
Mr. Perici, before you begin, I acknowledge that the village received your letter, I think, yesterday?
Yes.
Last night? Would you prefer that it be made part of the record? Or do you want it to be read into the record? Or another alternative would be, do you want to cover the major issues that you raise in the letter without having to have it read into the record? But no matter what, it will, it is part of the record, as you know.
Okay, thank you. Considering the hour, no, I do not want to read the entire letter into the record.
Thank you.
Appreciate the fact that it will be put into the record. If I had, if I may, I could address a couple of points raised in the, in the letter. And I guess I'd start with the issue that was already raised with respect to permanent maintenance funds. It is not accurate that the state regulates all cemeteries in the same way. Non-religious cemeteries are regulated differently than religious cemeteries. Religious cemeteries are, are regulated under the Religious cemeteries are, are regulated under the religious corporations law. And um, not for profit cemeteries are regulated under the not for profit corporations law. The not for profit corporations law requires a certain percentage of funds to be deposited into a permanent maintenance fund. Upon the sale of any parcel in a not for profit corporation's cemetery. That is not a requirement of religious corporations. However, many religious corporations, such as the trustees of Saint Patrick. Um, do put, put a portion of the proceeds of every lot sale. In excess, actually, of the funds in Ascension Cemetery's case, in excess of the funds. Required of not for profit cemetery corporations. Um, to ensure that the cemetery will have funds in perpetuity. At some point, um, the cemeteries are, they're, they're built to last forever. At some point, um, there will be no income from lot sales because all the slots will be sold. So the system is designed so that there's a fund available to maintain the cemetery, not for fifty or sixty years, but in perpetuity. That fund should, that fund is generated because um, this, this, well, the state has enacted that legislation because. Should a cemetery be abandoned or run out of funds? It goes to the town or local municipality to have to provide the maintenance, cut the lawn. Do all the work that's required for a cemetery and that burden falls on um. On the, on the town organization instead of the cemetery owners. Um, so that, that is how the law is set up. Um, I think it would be reasonable um, to um, have some statement from the applicants to um. Uh, demonstrate that they will be maintaining funds. Um, going into the, going into the future, either it's a percentage of lot sales or some other mechanism. Uh, to provide for perpetual maintenance of the property. The other issues addressed in the letter are wetland delineation. Um, the, I, I see, and I, as you know, we, I am still getting up to speed on this. Um, I, there was notices sent out, but I'm, I'm still getting up to speed, so um, forgive me, I'm trying to do it as fast as I can. But the United States Army Corps of Engineers. Um, the, the notion that it was sent and no one has heard back, but no one has even contacted them. To see what the status is or whether they, whether, whether a report is imminent is somewhat surprising to me. Um, but that's a necessary component for this to protect the wetlands in this area and the wetlands delineation and protection of wetlands. I would suspect is an important um, consideration for zoning board, the planning board and, and the village of Earmont. As I'm trying to get up to speed, we did not see significant or sensitive habitat. Review in the paperwork. If I just missed it, I'd, I'd be, I'd be happy with that, but that type of um, analysis. That and threatened and endangered species analysis typical for projects of these size. And um, of, of this manner, and I have not seen those in the documents that I've reviewed. Um, we've also discussed in the letter, the effect of cemetery leachate on groundwater quality. Um, it doesn't appear again from the materials I've reviewed that that has been studied in this case. Um, decomposition of, of um, enhumed bodies results in leachates typically comprised of um, certain materials. Including bacteria and other viruses in some, and in some cases, other chemical products such as heavy metals and other materials. Over time, that can leachate and seep into soil and can, can potentially contaminate ground and surface water. Um, that is, um, to the extent that hasn't been studied, we would suggest that that should be studied to make sure that there will not be issues at the cemetery. Um, and um, in addition, we would suggest that periodic groundwater monitoring for these chemicals. Um, established at this time over in the future would be an appropriate safeguard to protect against any issues in that regard. We've raised issues with respect to the proposed retaining law. Um, they are, uh, again, it has to do with perpetance, may, may perpetual maintenance type issues. Um, retaining walls are built to last, but not forever. Um, so the concern is that there would not be funds for these retaining walls in the future. At some point, if, and a retaining wall failure, given its location um, in a cemetery would be a particularly. Um, uh, well, disastrous situation. Um, so that's uh, one other thing, the sanitary facilities, we raised that, that issue as well, there are concerns. Um, and our experience that there are visitors to cemeteries that travel great distances before arriving. Um, there are some burial um, ceremonies that take considerable amount of time. And the lack of sanitary facilities and restrooms, um. We, we think the board should consider whether that would be a, a significant problem and affect the. Um, you know, the, the area, the surrounding landowners, including Ascension Cemetery located nearby where. I, I understand some will go to Dunkin Donuts, but some may go to Ascension Cemetery. Um, and whether um, that's a burden that should be placed on the neighbors. Uh, is a, is a question for the board to answer, but we submit that, that that burden should not be on the neighbors um, for those issues. So with that, um, and I appreciate that my letter is in the record. Um, so I'll wrap up at this point unless there's any questions for me or comments for me.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Uh, Jeff Phillips has been raising his hand.
All right, Mr. Phillips.
And I'm, okay.
I'm Jeff Phillips and I live at thirty eight Hillside Ave in Earmont.
You affirm the information you're about to give us is true to the best of your knowledge?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks. I, I'm still very concerned even after uh. Board member Dan, I appreciated you telling me to reach out to Mr. Sam. I did so. And we had some conversation on my property. And my wife and I are not happy with the results of the conversation. All right. There's not enough buffer between my pool where the females in my house swim. And the burial sites, all right? We've lived here, the house has been here for fifty one years and I think we're here for forty three, forty three, yeah. And it's been quiet. We loved it. That's why we moved here. We lived by the thruway before and it was not quiet. And it's, it's just as much as we're considering a hundred and two hundred feet from the uh, wetlands, right? We need consideration for that. All right, and I know it's, it's going to throw a kink in the project. But I just want you to also, the board members to also represent the people that have already been here for this length of time. And I, I don't know what else to say here. You know, I just like you to represent us also as Earmont residents. Okay? And I think that's it. I got a whole bunch of notes here, but I think I made my point.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Bound. Don't, don't, don't think that you're not being heard. Um. It's, um. It's important to note that uh, there are two separate boards that are reviewing this application. Um, this board is reviewing. For a variance. Um, and that's it. Um, the planning board is the board. Uh, that assuming they were to get the variance. Uh, that they're seeking from the zoning board, that they would have to go back before. And uh, that ward uh, deals with drainage, buffering. Uh, traffic, noise, et cetera. Um. They did uh, adopt what's called a negative declaration under seeker. So the major issues um, have already been addressed. Um, but one issue that uh, still remains. Uh, that the planning board's going to have to deal with, I, I think is your main issue and that has to do with software. But this board has no authority um, with regard to that issue. So, um, regardless of what happens tonight. Um, it'll be the planning board uh, that uh, you can raise these issues with. And that has uh, the jurisdiction uh, to uh, uh, address your concerns.
Starts with this board.
All right, and this, so this has nothing to do with the three and nine percent?
No, it does. It's the, uh, the three and nine, the, the buff, the three and nine percent. The buffer has nothing to do with three and nine percent.
Okay.
Buffer is a totally different issue.
Okay.
We have more people. Um, Carol Jacobs.
I'm muted over there. Um, my name is Carol Jacobs and I'm representing.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs.
All right, yes, the information I'm giving you, I'm not giving you information, I'm asking a question, but that's okay.
Can you affirm that what you're about to tell us is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, for the record, can you say where your address is?
I'm just about to, um. I am representing um, Gates of Zion Cemetery. And most of what I've wanted to say was mentioned by the gentleman. Um, who represented Ascension Cemetery. And could you give me his name? Because I missed that in the um. Could you give me the name of that gentleman?
Sure, it is um, Matthew Parisi, P A R I S I.
I S I, Matthew Parisi. Thank you very much. The only additional question that I had to bring up. Was with regard to escrow. Is there any provision for uh, any escrow funds in this project? To ensure that there are no repercussions for the uh, drainage problems for the neighbors? Or um, these um, borders for the neighbors, et cetera, et cetera, that are uh, in the project? But are there escrow funds that will assure that these will be taken care of?
Mr. Bound, you want to respond to that?
Um, there are no escrow provisions under the village law that requires money to be put aside. To ensure that um, these things will be taken care of. The, the, the stormwater management plan is reviewed by your village engineer. They're adequate, uh, excellent engineers. They will make sure that the plans meet all requirements of the New York State D E C. And, and that's the way it's done. And if there is a problem.
There is escrow uh, that is set aside for that.
For the stormwater.
For the stormwater.
Then I stand corrected. Whatever escrow is required will be, will be submitted.
And that only, but that only covers um, the water piece. It doesn't cover anything else.
Not, not to my knowledge, but I'll let Mr. Crash Hour answer that one.
No, it doesn't.
It's just the stormwater maintenance agreement.
Okay, would you consider putting that into the agreement?
Putting one into the agreement.
Uh, some escrow funds to assure that all of these um. Border protections will be in place?
Um, no, that is what uh, the stormwater management agreement is supposed to do. Um, they're supposed to submit an annual report. Uh, the village engineer uh, is supposed to check on the uh, functionality. Uh, of the stormwater uh, system and uh, in the event. Uh, and it, uh, the agreements for a number of years. Um, and in the event that uh, they fail to upkeep. Uh, the facilities, that's why uh, we retain um, escrow monies. Um, and in the agreement, it states that we're allowed to enter the property to make any uh, repairs. Uh, uh, to the system if, in the event of uh, a failure.
Yes, I understood that, but that again, was in reference to water. My question was in relation to some of the buffering that was planned.
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, well, first of all, this, this is a planning board issue, not a zoning board issue. Uh, but if I'm not mistaken, um, we require um, a tree uh.
Tree.
Maintenance bond.
Yes.
Um, for a number of planting seasons, but I don't recall off the top of my head. How many there, how many seasons that.
Probably two to three, Dan.
Okay.
No, that's, that's fine. That answers my question, that there is attention being paid to that issue. And that's what I was really looking for, the fact that there is some attention to that issue. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jacobs, I would also point out that under the site plan requirements, the applicant must maintain. The landscaping in perpetuity, and if they don't, they're in violation of their site plan.
They.
Tree dies, they need to replant with something similar. Um, and if they don't, the building department can issue violations for not maintaining the landscaping in accordance with the plan as finally approved by the planning board.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next person is John Keely. Mr. Keely, are you there? You have to unmute yourself.
Yes, it took me a moment to find that.
Okay, I just didn't know if you were still there.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Keely.
Hello.
You state your name and address for the record and you affirm that the information you're about to give us is true to the best of your knowledge?
Uh, the information I provide will be true, sir.
Okay, best of your knowledge. If you state your address also for the record?
Yes, again, my name is John Keely, died at eighty six Hillside Avenue. I've been a resident here for twenty nine years. I share approximately a three hundred and sixty foot common border with this proposed application. I have certain concerns. Um, firstly, uh, this is going to be a very highly visited cemetery. On a very uh, limited sight distance street, there should be sidewalks to protect. Uh, all of the mourners in the area. Uh, secondly, uh, there's a proposed fence. Um, chain link across and around the whole cemetery. I would propose one similar fencing that's used at Zion and the uh, Ascension Cemetery. Why surround it in chain link fencing? Uh, I think it's very important that the Army Corps of Engineers participate in this. There is a significant land. I enjoy it uh, directly behind my house. Um, lastly, I believe there should be facilities to include bat facilities. Um, I really um, uh, know that uh, people need bats facilities at, at such structures. Um, and lastly, grab water. I do have a private well. What happens if this becomes a well? Um, who pays for it? I'll direct that to Mr. Bound, please.
As far, as far as we know, um, Mr. Keely, um, your well is, is nowhere close to our property. And, and by health department regulations, um, a well only has to be a hundred feet away from a grave site. I think we're way in excess of that amount. We would love to be able to know exactly where your well is. We believe it's closer to Hillside Avenue. And it's probably more than a couple hundred feet from our property line. Um, however, we have not. You know, we've not received an invite from you to come on and, and locate your well and, and, and we would like to do that if you're concerned. We would certainly identify it and we would, we would measure the distance from your well to the property to make sure. That we have more than adequate separation in accordance with the health department regulations. However, we can't just come onto your property and, and look for it, so.
I reiterate, you, you can come onto my property and look for it and um.
Excuse me?
There are graves within. There are graves within forty foot of my property proposed.
There are graves from about, as as Mr. Ziegler testified, about about sixty to sixty-five feet from your rear property line, I I acknowledge that. We do have a landscape plan, your property will be landscaped with spruce trees, if you want additional landscaping, I I did speak to your lawyer. Um, he did not tell me that we were authorized to come onto your property and and find your well. So uh we would love to do that, and if you'd like some additional landscaping, we'd be more than happy to discuss that with you. And provide you with some additional landscaping to further buffer the rear of the property. Only a small portion of the property behind your house is is where we're proposing cemeteries, you indicated you have about three hundred feet. I think we're all going to come on to maybe. Thirty thirty feet towards your property, and it and it is heavily wooded back there, so I I don't think you're going to see any. Any difference between uh what exists now and what it's going to exist once we install the grave sites. And again, I think it's less uh uh less of an impact than any of the uses such as yeshivas or houses of worship. Or schools that can go in there. And uh we we think this is a a good use, as I said, a passive use, and it's not going to adversely impact you at all, but. Um, again, we we would love to sit down and talk with you, and um if you have your attorney call me again. We'd be happy to set up and find your well and discuss the landscaping and try and make you happy.
Sir, I believe it is proposed a clear cutting of approximately ten acres. There's all trees and mature growth there now.
The the it is true that it eventually that will all be clear cut, it's going to be done in phases in accordance with state regulations. So it's going to be done in in three separate phases, but yes, we need to clear the trees. In order to put in the grave sites, just as was done for Gates of Zion, just as was done for the Ascension Cemetery. And um if the board, if Suzanne, if I can share my map, what?
Sure.
My screen one more time.
Yep, you have permission.
Okay. So here, back to my screen, this is my three percent, but let me go to my overlay map. I'll go to overlay two first, so here here's the overlay, down here is Hillside Avenue, this is our lot. This sort of Tetra shape, um, this is Mr. Achilles Lot, here's his house all the way down here. The grave sites are going to be right up in here. Okay, if you see the gates of Zion, that is all cleared. And you sort of superimpose this on our portion, it's probably not much bigger. Um, than they've cleared, and if you come over here and you look at the Ascension Cemetery, well, they've. They're pretty much cleared all the way through here and down through here and here, they've got it much more clear than than we do, we're just going to clear a section. Right along here, down to about here, our parking's going to go in along here, we'll come up, we'll have another section, we'll come up, then we'll close the loop. If if I can go to the. The plan. We do have a phasing. Plan, but I think this is the old one, Dave, you have the current phasing plan that you can share?
No, no, I don't have the the current plan that we just submitted, but it uh it. It's a little bit different than that one, what we did was on on uh number one, we included the section five, so it's a little bit changed. On notice, uh, one and two's a little uh goes all the way to the north, but uh that's basically it, so he's he's adjacent to the third section.
He's adjacent to the third section, so this this won't be cleared um until until the third phase. And again, if I.
And we also removed that drive, that's a a future drive, we are not going to pave that, we are going to uh leave that as grass for now.
Right, so if we if we don't pave this, we've got a distance, I think, Dave, you measured also about sixty-five feet from the rear property line?
That's correct.
Okay, and and this is again, this is Mr. Achilles Lot, his house is all the way down here. And this is. This, here's Mr. Achilles' house all the way down here. And this is where those grave sites are going to go in, and this is what's going to be cleared. We're not clearing much more than this leg. Which is not any greater than what Ascension Cemetery has cleared. And not that much more than Gates of Zion has cleared. So we're we're not looking to do anything different than anybody else does or any other cemetery does. As Dave's uh pointed out the last time, the trees are. Interfere with the grave sites, you need to get the trees out of there, you can't take them down later because you're going to interfere with grave sites. Um, if the roots start growing into the grave sites, they create a problem. You 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 clear it, that's, if you look at every cemetery, that's pretty much the way they do, some may leave trees in 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 certain areas. Um, with regard to our project, we're not doing it, instead, we're leaving the entire section where the wetlands are. And uh where the the property cuts up, we're leaving that alone, so. That's that that that's our intent, you can see over here, here's here's the full section, here's the site, here's the cemetery. You know, we're pretty much keeping to this loop with the exception of one, two, three, four additional sections. We put more, or not, so.
Great amount of planting, I understand that, the other two cities are are located on a major road, uh this cemetery would not fit. There are limited site distances, precluded other. There are uh health, safety and welfare issues that need to be addressed and are being overlooked. I just ask that you comply with state and federal mandates, and also the Army Corps of Engineers must be involved. If you go back to your topographic, you can clearly see that the ground grade pours towards that wetland.
Now, the 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 grade on this property, Dave, Dave, you want to take that one?
It's a wetland. Gates from the surrounding areas.
You want it, you want it?
Yeah.
One, Dave?
You're actually downhill from the two other uh cemeteries, our construction area is over the ridge from your house. So the water from the site does not go into that stream that goes down through your yard where the other cemeteries do. This water, the surface drainage from our site goes down to the southeast corner, so uh. You could see the ridge right there on the property, I mean, I'm sorry, right there on the fence line. Uh, so we're staying to the east side of the ridge, if we went to the west side, we'd be draining into you.
And 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 as they indicated, the 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 village engineers reviewed the drainage, she's satisfied. We're staying out of the 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 buffer around the wetlands, the village engineer was satisfied as well as the village planner with that. Um, the plans were sent for review by the Army Corps, we've not heard from them. Um, we do not think we need any permits from them, if we do need a permit from the Army Corps, we'll get a permit. And we'll make sure we get a permit, but we we don't need a permit, we're we're so far away, we're not even within their jurisdiction.
Okay, uh, Keely, are you satisfied?
Yes, I am, I think the Army Corps of Engineers will really have much more um input than uh.
Okay, Suzanne, is there anyone else?
There's two more people, Richard, is that you, Mr. Berger?
Um, yeah, that was about something that was addressed earlier, so I'm okay.
Okay, um. Danielle Meehan, I'll get back to you, Mrs. Jacobs, Danielle Meehan?
My question was answered, Suzanne, thank you.
All right, um, Carol Jacobs.
We should mention there is eleven o'clock curfew here, and we're.
We turn to pumpkins, yes, um, this is, um, you said about the water, that there will be no water there um. Brought in at all, there'll be no uh access to any water on the property, is that what I understood?
Yes.
Well, then, how are you going to maintain um the lawn, the shrubs, et cetera, you can't just depend upon the um the rain? And then there's also a Jewish custom of uh washing your hands when you leave a cemetery, and there's usually a faucet available for that. So um. I'm not sure how you're going to be able to sustain not having any water available for various purposes.
Dave, you want to address that one, I mean, I think you did last time?
Yeah, there's not going to be a sprinkler system on the on the site, there's no water, there's no sewer or water going to be serviced, and uh. As far as the uh what you were talking about for the ceremony, that was going to be brought in for that uh. For the for the ceremonies as they go on, but there's no water service in the site.
So you're not even going to have a place to hook up a hose? Because I'm not talking.
That's correct.
I'm not talking about a sprinkler system, I know that's not in the in the uh design, but certainly a hose.
Not 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 now, there's there's nothing uh on the plans, uh, there's no water in Hillside, so the only thing that could be done was. Uh, be a drill a well, but there's no no proposal for that right now.
It's perpetual care, it's a little short sighted, I think, but okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I don't see any other hands raised, Chairman.
Okay, um.
I would like to speak, please.
What, someone wants to speak?
Absolutely.
Uh, phone number three, four, three, three?
That is me.
Okay, and your name?
Steven Klein. Seven, three, Regina Road. Aramont. So.
Wait, wait, Arthur, you want to comment?
Oh, yeah, I gotta, I guess, I'll take the oath, yeah, sorry.
You affirm the information you're about to give is best, the the best of your knowledge, true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed.
So. What, the difference, the the big difference between Gates of Zion and Ascension. Is that they're not in people's backyards, they're not encroaching on people's property. All right? And the idea that the Army Corps has been informed. And they haven't responded to forego that, what's the rush? Do you think that maybe you might want to contact them to see? Wh- what, you know, if it's in if it's in the pipeline, no pun intended? Because guess what? There are er- soil erosion and water usage issues here, and there is an aquifer, and it. Is an aquifer that leads to headwaters to the Hackensack River watershed in New Jersey, and you know what? What? What happens, somebody want to stop me? What happens if some of these prognostications are not correct? Because I I listen very carefully to what Mr. Parisi had to say about heavy metals, et cetera. And without that knowledge, I I'm not sure how this can all move forward. In a way that is safe for the residents, never mind the impact. On quality of life in that area, I I. I've been up to the sites, you know, s- multiple times, and when I look at that, what has to be clear cut. Under under the circumstances here with no word from Army Corps, and with all these other, you know, environmental issues, and the fact that. That this is going to encroach on people's private property with all these, you know, proposals. You know, what happens in the fall when there are no leaves on the trees? Then what? I I, so that I think that I've said what I had to say, thank, and thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir, uh, is that it, Suzanne?
That is it that I can say, yes.
Okay, um. You have some communications from the Department of Planning. Some G M Ls. I guess you should put it in the record, are they, have they put it in the record already, or did that be put in now?
No, we didn't put anything in the record at the last meeting.
Okay.
There's the G M L dated April nineteenth. There is.
That one I have.
Rockland County Store District number one dated April fifteenth, and then again, fourth. We also have the record, um.
I don't, uh.
I'm looking back at last month's packet, that's where they were in, um.
The sewer district number one, yes, I have that.
And then we have the letter that was already written, put in the record for Mr. Parisi, but I have not received.
Oh, let me finish up and go, unless you want me to go up from the store, which I'll be happy to do.
Sorry about that, um.
There's two items you're saying, is the uh.
Items that I have.
Did you do uh the Joseph uh LaFiantra one?
Uh, Rockland County Store dated May fourth, thank you, Dan.
Welcome.
And there was one also dated April fifteenth, I think I said that already.
April fifteenth, yeah, and Joseph LaFiantra I have, and I have the April nineteenth. The Rockland County Department of Planning. Uh, where was the third one you said?
The the one that we we discussed from Mr. Parisi, the letter that he wrote, he's not an agency, but he was a letter that was put into the record.
So that's already in?
Yes, Dan had brought that up when he spoke during the public hearing time. And I'm just double checking my file, I think that's everything.
Two items we're talking about, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Two items, okay, so let's put them in the record now, um.
Okay.
Uh, this is a um. April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, letter from the Rockland County Department of Planning, a general municipal law review. Uh, I am Har Shalom Cemetery, forty-four Hillside Avenue, reason for referral. Uh, town of Ravapoke, the county, the county of Rockland Department of Planning has reviewed the above item. Acting under the terms of the above G M L powers of those vested by the community by the county of Rockland Charter. I, the commissioner of planning hereby recommend the following record, following modifications. Item one, the town of Ravapoke is the reason for this proposal was referred to this department for review. The municipal boundary is adjacent to the southern property line of the parcel. New York State General Municipal Law states that the purposes of section two thirty-one dash L. And two thirty-nine dash M, and two thirty-nine dash N shall be to bring. From the intercommunity and county-wide planning, zoning, site plan, and subdivision considerations to the attention of neighboring. Of neighboring. And. Thus review. Thus review. Community and county-wide considerations in respect to the compatibility of various land uses of one another. Traffic generating characteristics of various land uses in relation to the effect of such traffic on other land. And to the. And the protection of community character as regards dominant land uses, population density, and relation between residential and non-residential areas. Addition to section two seventy-nine, there's N N was enacted to encourage the coordination of land use development, deregulation among adjacent municipalities. And as a result, development occurs in a manner that is supportive of the goals and objectives of the general area. Town of Ravapoke must be given the opportunity to review and propose its impact on community character, traffic, water quantity. Uh, and quality, drainage, stormwater runoff, and sanitary sewer service. Areas of county-wide concern noted above that directly impacts the town of Ramapo must be considered and satisfactorily addressed as well as any additional concerns about the proposal. That's all item one. Item two. A review must be completed by the Rockland County Department of Health to ensure compliance with article XIX mosquito control of the Rockland County Sanitary Code. In addition, the village was reviewed the department's letter of March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one to Eva and Huso DE of Brooklyn Engineering regarding separation distances from private wells and give the comments provided due consideration. Do we know if Eva and Huso has got a copy of that?
Yes, she has.
And she has, and she's commented, yes.
Okay, since a portion of the site is located within federal wetlands, review shall be completed by the United States Army Corps of Engineers and any required permits obtained. To help reduce the extent, well, actually, let me ask, have what's happened with the Army Corps of Engineers? Has anything been submitted to them?
I submitted to town of the Ramapo, no comment as of yet. I submitted to Rockland County Health and reached out to them a second time, and I've submitted to the Army Corps of Engineer for both planning and zoning, and I have not received any comments from them yet.
Okay. Item four, to help reduce the extent of development coverage variance required for the site, pervious pavers and or other porous materials must be used whenever possible. Item five, pursuant to general municipal law, section two thirty-nine dash M and two thirty-nine dash N, if any other conditions of this GML review are overridden by the board, the local land use board must file a report with the county commissioner of planning of the final action taken. If the final action is contrary to the recommendation of the commissioner, the local land use board must state the reasons for such action. Item six, in addition, pursuant to executive order oh one dash twenty seventeen, signed by county executive day on May twenty-two, twenty seventeen, county departments are prohibited from issuing a county permit, license, or approval until the report is filed with the county commissioner of planning. The applicant must provide to any a county agency, the jurisdiction of the project, a copy of the commissioner report approving proposed action or to a copy of the commissioner planning recommendation to modify or disapprove proposed action and a certified copy of the land use board statement overriding the recommendations to modify or disapprove and the stated reasons for the land use boards override. Item seven. The following additional comments are offered strictly as observations and are not part of our general municipal law review. The board may have already addressed these points and may disregard them without any formal vote under the GML process. And under this is written, as required by New York State Real Property Law, section four fifty-one, the applicant must obtain consent in the Rockland County Legislature for the establishment of a cemetery. Signed by actual commissioner of planning Douglas Schutz. Okay. Let me just read the other item. This is the Rock County Sewer District number one dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, Ray Har Shalom Cemetery. Harley, our office has received reviewed, our office has received and reviewed an overall grading plan that was last revised on March one, twenty twenty-one, which Axel Lasher and Ziegler prepared for the above reference project. We thank you for the opportunity to comment on this application. Our comments are as follows. Item one, the district does not object to proposed cemetery. The plans do not show any buildings, E.G. administrative offices, maintenance buildings, et cetera, on the site. Item two, if this project changes to include connections to public sewers, Rockland County Sewer District number one's commercial dog and residential wastewater questionnaire and the county planning information certification must be submitted to and approved by this office. Property owner must sign the wastewater questionnaire.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The balance of that letter is their standard
Yes.
letter, and it's already in the record.
And we also have the same letter dated May fourth.
Okay, so so that's signed by Joseph LaFiantra, engineer two. All right, so those are the two things that have to go in the record or already in the record. And now I guess we should deal with the GML of April nineteenth. Again, there's no disapproval here, and this recommendations of modifications. What what are we override? What is it to override here?
Pavers?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we we've requested override of item number three.
Number four.
And number four, number three, because we don't even come close to the wetlands. We're not disturbing the wetlands. We're not disturbing a hundred-foot buffer around the wetlands. It's it's not, there's nothing for the Army Corps of Engineer to review. It's pretty much been confirmed by the villagers planner and engineer. So we're asking the board to override that recommendation. And we're also asking the board to override comment four because there's really no proper location for the use of pervious papers or porous materials. And even if we did use pervious pavers, it would not reduce the the development coverage. We would still need a development coverage of nine percent because your code does not recognize the use of those types of materials in order to reduce the development coverage.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bown. So should we now vote on this, Dan?
Uh. Are we ready to close the public hearing?
Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Someone has their hand raised, Chairman Katz.
And who is that?
Mr. Phillips.
But you're not a board member. All right, this public hearing is still open, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, um, go ahead, Mr. Phillips. I'm trying to unmute you. Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, I'm waiting for some information out of the archives of Rock from Rockland County. All right, it has to do with the buffer zones. All right, and I should have that tomorrow. I'm trying to do my due diligence on this. I'm just really tired. Once again, it's eleven o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
But let me refresh your recollection that you have time on that because that is an issue that the planning board will deal with.
Okay.
All right, why don't we you know basically the same thing that they do at an auction, going once, going twice on any anyone else who might want to make a comment? And then if there is none for the board to entertain whether or not they want to close the public hearing?
All right, so again, is anyone in the public who wishes to offer some information?
That hasn't already been
That hasn't already been done? Going once, twice, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, Marty Cavell here, to close the public hearing in the matter of Har Shalom Cemetery, forty-four Hillside Avenue.
We have a second on that.
A second.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
I I any opposed?
Okay, so that makes it unanimous in favor. The public hearing is closed.
Yes. Two things, one seeker was already completed by the planning board at their main meeting. The next thing that the board would have to consider is whether or not to override the two comments from the Rockland County GML from April. And Paul. I'm going to do the same thing I did on the prior application with Mr. Sporaco. Reward what you offered as the rationale for both of them separately.
With regard to comment three, which requests a review to be completed by the Army Corps of Engineers, this project does not disturb the wetlands, does not disturb a hundred-foot buffer around the wetlands. Any disturbance is more than two hundred feet away. No permit is required from the Army Corps of Engineers for this project. And the project has been sent to the Army Corps for review, but they have not responded, and they cannot be compelled to do a review. You don't need a permit from them because we're not disturbing the the wetlands or the buffer area. We're requesting that the zoning board override that comment from the county department of planning.
All right, so
And I would also add to that that in the in the event that the planning board should this be approved for the variance disagrees with the zoning board's override that they will have an opportunity to express their opinion to the contrary.
Yeah, I would even point out that the the county made the same exact comment to the planning board. So the planning board is going to have to do the same thing you are doing, entertain an override, and they'll either override it or they won't.
Do you understand that, Mr. Phillips?
Okay, so we have a motion to override the
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
To override
Who was the second, Mr. Berger? Oh, Meyer, sorry.
To override, can I do, you have to do it separately, or can you do them together?
Do them separately.
To override point three in the April nineteenth letter from the Rockland County Department of Planning. Do I need to specify and reread it, Mr. Attorney?
No, based on the reasons provided.
Based upon the reasons provided by the applicant. That's it?
Oh, four, you gotta do four.
Now I gotta do four.
You gotta vote on three first.
You gotta vote on three first, dude. Awesome.
All right, please call the roles, Suzanne.
Um, Mr. Cavell?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Scott, Scott Meyer.
That, yes.
Sheldon Matt Meyer?
Yes.
Chairman Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, please.
Yes, please.
Override
Item four.
Point or item four from April nineteenth letter from the Rockland County Department of Planning with the reasons is specified by the applicant.
Actually, Paul, did you specify those?
It is in my narrative that I sent to the board. If you'd like, I'd read it for you.
Please.
We
Yeah. Although Suzanne, can you find it?
Yeah, I have it here. He he said it before.
Yeah.
There was no location for the pavers or porous material. If they use pavers, they still would need a development coverage. The code doesn't recognize those items to define it, correct, Paul?
Yes.
Thank you.
The code does not recognize pervious pavers or porous materials in lieu of, you know, development coverage. So you'd still need a development coverage, even if the whole site was covered with porous pavers. We would still need a nine percent development coverage.
All right, and we have a second for that.
Who was the second? Scott Meyer? All in favor, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Scott Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon Meyer?
Yes.
Marty Cavell?
Yes.
Chairman Katz?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries unanimously, five to one. Five to zero, excuse me. It's late.
Okay. I don't think we're going to have reached a decision on this tonight. Is that correct? Well, actually, what's left to do here?
The variance.
Variants. Rides, are you going to do the variance for the developmental coverage?
Okay, we get up going to do that. Do we have a motion to to deal with that variance request?
Well, do the may I suggest that someone either make a motion to approve or deny? And then someone seconds that and that you take a vote and give your reasons as detailed or well, as detailed as you wish.
Okay, anyone want to come forward with that motion, such a motion?
I make a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second. Okay. Any discussion of the of the of this, of the motion?
Okay, I'll do a roll call.
Okay, roll call, and you have to give reasons. Go ahead.
Okay, Sheldon Meyer?
I approve. I'll just note that what you mentioned the first time. Very sort of limited use of site, very not used site. I'm actually, I would certainly raise by maybe just a hundred percent. But I think that, as I said, that is our issue.
That was
Okay, I hope someone speaks Star Wars, because
Yeah, your mic was completely, I don't know, I couldn't understand anything you said. I apologize.
Yes, as I earlier.
Yeah, can you give me like a bullet point reason?
Yeah, so basically, for the reason that I'm downloading this time, this is a nine percent development coverage, not a very
Don't understand the word.
He votes yes, and maybe he could submit his reason and what I heard or what I translated from Vulcan is that a nine percent variance is not a large variance compared to other variances that or other developments that would be allowed to be built on this site.
Okay, next.
Okay, Mr. Berger?
I feel that that what they're asking for is appropriate. It's you know, I feel for neighboring people that are concerned about buffers. And again, once that that's going to be handled with the plan And again, once that that's gonna be handled with the planning board. And that I think that. The applicant's attorneys had talked about. Meeting with some of the people that were neighbors to make sure that they were addressed properly with. Regarding landscaping and everything, so I think it's all being addressed appropriately, so I I approve.
Okay. Mister Cavell?
Vote yes, given that. The great county of Rockland government has given its approval for this. And that it's permitted in the zone. And that I'm confident that the. Planning Board of this village will do its best to accommodate. What to have. To stipulate that the terrain be properly screened to residential housing. And the request for the nine percent bulk variance. Is a minimal request. I vote yes.
Okay. Did I do Scott Meyer?
Okay, at this time, I I vote yes to grant the variance from three percent to nine percent. And as Marty and my fellow fellow. Chairpeople, I have confidence in the planning board, and they will hopefully take care of the buffers for the neighbors there. Oh, what could be built there? I think this is not that bad. I used to travel Hillside Ave quite a lot until they closed the bridge up the Saddle River. I have to go around the long way now.
Close the bridge.
What's that?
They closed the bridge.
I know they did.
I'm sad.
I vote yes.
All right, and Chairman Katz?
I vote yes also for the zoning, the issue before the zoning board is the three to nine percent change. And that is not significant, in my opinion, in this case. And all the other issues of however valid they may be will be dealt with by the planning board. So I vote yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion carries unanimously five to zero.
We need to send the override resolutions to county planning. And the applicant must return to the planning board for site plan approval.
And I think you're scheduled to be on for the June twenty fourth, Paul, correct?
That's correct.
For planning board.
Yeah, did you did you get a submission today, Suzanne?
I did, I have five boxes sitting on my counter I haven't even had a chance to look at.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure it was submitted.
Yes, I did receive everything, thank you. Megan came, thank you, Dave.
We we thank you very much on behalf of the applicant. I know it's a long night, and I know. The board had a lot to deal with, and I appreciate the fortitude of of everybody in in hearing the application, and. We appreciate the comments from the public, and we hope everybody will be satisfied before the planning board with this project and. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, we still have one more item on the agenda, but I don't think we're gonna reach it tonight, being that we passed our curfew.
Yes, but I believe we need to continue to open and then continue the public hearing, Dan.
Which are we talking about?
Dunkin' Donuts, we have to continue.
Yes, we have to open it and.
Continue.
Adjourn it to. You tell me.
Okay, well, the next meeting would be Thursday, July eighth. Question, the other application is the one that you cannot be on, you or Scott Meyer, because you both have to recuse yourself for conflict. That's for a public hearing, and then this would be a continued public hearing. That that, those are the only applications for July, because the submission has passed.
Okay.
We just have two, and hopefully we can do both in one night.
Wish we we can, we have that, we we can do it.
I just wanted to.
Go, Marty.
So one sec, we're opening up the public hearing application.
Real estate.
For approval to add to a small drive through. To the. To a small drive through to the existing Dunkin' Donuts. And a small addition to the rear of the existing building of the drive up window, a walk in box. Additional signs for the drive up service, additional plantings and fencing. The application is considered a fast food restaurant, which will require a special permit. And will require variances, markle three, section two ten dash twenty one dash E, parentheses eleven. Article four, section two ten dash twenty eight, attachment eleven, table eight. Article six, section two ten dash fifty six dash A, parentheses nineteen, twenty one and twenty five. The following variances, minimum lot area, lot width, front setback, and north to bound. Front yard and north air mount, front yard north to bound, side setback, total side setback, side yard, rear setback. Rear yard, elemental coverage, buffer from residential areas and parking spaces, parking waiver. The property is located on the west side of North Airmont Road at the intersection of North to Bound Avenue. The lot is designated as section fifteen point oh seven, block two lot eight of Towne Ramco Tax Back. Property is located in the V C this zoning district and is comprised of point seven four acres. The street address is fourteen North Airmont Road, Airmont, New York, one oh nine oh one. Okay. We what we make a motion now to open the public hearing, is that what's next?
Yes.
Need a motion?
I make the motion to open the public hearing in this application.
Who seconded it?
Need a second? Was that, okay, Sheldon Meyer, Meyer?
All in favor?
I.
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 Motion carried.
Motion to continue the hearing to July, what is it?
July eighth. Remember, we're starting at seven, starting at.
Keep speaking clean law again.
Seven thirty.
Mister Chairman, I'll make him, I make a motion to continue the public hearing in this case to July eighth at seven thirty P M.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all favor say aye. All right, that's you that all opposed? No one, all right, that makes it unanimous. We are adjourned.
No, 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 I just want to remind everyone. That there is the sexual harassment class on June twenty third. I have not received as of yet, I usually get it two or three days before, it is mandatory. That everyone take it if you haven't already, and send me a copy. Very, very important for insurance, please.
Yeah, Suzanne, I think I sent mine to you already, right?
Yeah, you you and Marty are the only ones I have from zoning, so the remainder of you must take it, please.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you. We never, because I was trying to call the members that weren't on, we never formally approved the minutes. Do you want to just do it for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, let's put it over to the next meeting.
Give people time to digest them and appropriately rule on it.
Tonight, and um, and now you can make a motion to adjourn.
Mister Chairman. I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting of June tenth of the zoning board of appeals.
I second. Okay, all favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Dunkin', that we didn't get to you.
All right.
Don't say I didn't tell you there was a chance, I did.
Yeah, you didn't say it was a hundred percent.
Well, I didn't know what.
You should have called me.
We are adjourned.
Okay, thank you, everyone, have a good.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, Suzanne, thank you, Dan. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Be well, good night.
Good night.